Okay, we're on. Are we good? We're ready to go. Okay, everyone, it's Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. It's Wednesday, July 24th, and we're gonna start with additions or deletions to the agenda. John, you ready for that?
Yes, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda today.
Okay, then. And I want to open this to public comment. And I understand Joey came to say something to us. Come on up if you're ready to.
You ready for me right at the back?
Yeah, we're public comment. If you're doing public comment, this is your... Here you go.
I'm here to answer questions. I don't have a comment.
Oh.
Commissioner Newman asked me to be here.
Oh, George, ask away.
Yeah, I'd just like to pose a question for Joey. I'm just curious, based on last week's political fundraiser with Vice President Pence, just kind of curious, you know, when you have to allocate dollars for these events, where do they get allocated from out of your budget? I mean, do you have to come before us to ask for a supplemental budget coming out of the general fund, or how do you handle that?
In this case, because my overtime is... We've already come close to exceeding my overtime anyway for the year. It comes... We just go over, and then you appropriate more money to me, or give it to me in a form of a supplemental. So this is an unbudgeted amount. I don't have a dignitary line item to be paid for, although maybe we should consider one and just roll it over year to year. But, no, it basically comes out of our budget, and we go over.
So it comes out of the general fund?
Yes.
So the general fund, the taxpayers are basically footing the bill for a private fundraiser, and which the taxpayers and the citizens should know that.
I hope they do. I mean, we've had these conversations publicly in the newspaper since the mid-'90s. We hosted President Bush I in 1990 or '91, and we didn't know much about dignitary visits. And that took about 100 cops from around the state. Mrs. Thatcher was with him, and we ate that. We figured it was a one-time-only, what an honor to have the President or Vice President in our little community, and we took it that way. I was there. A few years later, when President Clinton came, it was the same thing, and we asked to be reimbursed. We didn't know enough. We went to the Secret Service. They don't have a line item for this, and they shouldn't. They'd be broke if every city asked them for money across the country, and their fellow police officers, just like I am. So I think we should help them. But when President Clinton came, we had an anonymous donor, a local Democrat, pay us for the visit. And ever since then, Sheriff Bratus started the policy of asking for money in advance, before they come, who's gonna pay us? And I've... I was responsible for a lot of those visits under Sheriff Bratus, and I took care of it the way I'm taking care of it today. I usually ask for the money in advance, make the deal in advance, and we've been getting paid. In this case, I asked for the money in advance, and nobody would tell me who the host of the fundraiser was, which is who I usually go to to ask for the money. If the Vice President were to come here and appear publicly, I wouldn't ask for the money because I think that's a benefit to all of us, that we get to shake hands with the second in charge, and maybe ask a few questions. That doesn't happen. I think when they're here... If he was just here to go to the Republican Governors' meeting, and was locked away and was doing business, maybe we shouldn't pay for that. But I believe when you come here and raise funds, after all of us have run for our jobs, we know the difference between campaigning and working. So I think if he's here working with governors, just like when we go to a caucus meeting in Woody Creek, probably not the best time to raise funds. But if he's here at $35,000 a couple, which we think netted between $600,000 and $700,000, kick a little back to us locals.
So have you reached out to the Picken County Republican?
Yes.
And have they responded to you?
No one knows who the host of the party was.
Really? The head of the Picken County Republican Party doesn't know?
Nor was she at the party.
And so he...
Interesting. All right, well, thanks, Joey, for...
Any other questions? I know this is a hot topic.
I just want to thank you and your deputies for stepping up, and everyone else that put in overtime to ensure that there was a safe visit for the Vice President. And I appreciate all the work that your department does.
Well, thank you, George. And just to add to that, to the people that are watching at home, is that if we didn't participate, I'd be worried more... We had a major impact on us Monday and Tuesday. If we didn't participate, I'm afraid that impact would be a lot larger. So I think that being in the loop, myself, Richard Pryor, Brian Olson could help minimize the impact to our microscopic communities, and I think that's why we're doing it. So if that's worth $24,000 to our community, maybe we eat this money. I don't know.
Yeah, thanks, Joey. Thanks, Patty.
Well, I think we're gonna eat this money regardless of whether or not we want to.
I'm not gonna give up so quickly, but...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to make it clear to the public now, too, that this is not a partisan issue. This is an issue regardless of party affiliation, that we have a policy that we have always... An unwritten policy that we've always tried to recoup those funds. And I do want to thank not only the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department, but also the State Highway Patrol. And I saw CPW, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, out there. I saw City of Aspen people out there, Public Works out there lining the streets. We do what we need to do, and in my understanding, in the past, one of the reasons we step up to the plate, we being you, is because when we have some form of local control, as you said, we don't succumb to the Secret Service coming in and taking over the whole entire community. They work really well with our Sheriff's Office, with you, Joey, and we really appreciate that. I think that minimizes, even though there's a lot of people who may not think it was a minimal impact, it does minimize the impact of a visit such as we had this week.
Yeah, and I think we're not done yet. I mean, we all know that we need money to run for our jobs, and next year at this time, I assume that we will have visits like this again.
I think we'll be having them a lot, so I think we just need to make it very clear that we appreciate people coming to this community. We would appreciate some public time, so the public who's impacted gets, as you said, some benefit. But when we don't have public time, and it's just here for a private fundraiser, the impact to our community financially, to the County's general fund, should not just be absorbed by the taxpayers in Picken County.
I'm glad you said "nonpartisan" too, because I've asked both sides for the money.
Right, and I want that to be very clear.
And sometimes it's a little bit of a fight. Sometimes it's, where do I send the money?
And I want the public to know that, that this is just not because...
This isn't me getting even with the current administration. It doesn't matter to me.
I just want to make that clear. Thanks, Joey.
Steve, you got a question? No, we're good. Kelly? All right.
Great, thank you. I think we've covered it.
Thanks for coming over, Joey.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
I need another $50,000 in the budget, too.
Good luck raising the money.
Keep that work for it, Joey. Work for it.
Write those tickets.
Yeah, well, one big ticket will do it. Okay, up next, we're public comment. We're open for public comment. If anyone else would like to come up, come on down. Hello, Lee.
Hi, my name is Lee Mulcahy. Congratulations, Kelly, on the birth of your...
Thank you.
And just, I want... It's a heartfelt thank you to Patty for your support, for your love, for... Just, thank you. Have you had a chance to talk to Tori?
No, I have not. I've not seen her or any other members of City Council. They've been kind of busy across the street.
Yeah, yeah. And Steve, thank you. Thank you for your support. George, you don't feel that our family should be given a hearing on our eviction, correct?
Hey, Lee, this is public comment. We're not doing question and answer today, so...
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna direct George not to answer. Same with the others.
So I brought in a little packet and to answer, you know, to... Obviously, to try to persuade Mr. Newman, because he... Congratulations on being selected for the APSHA board. APSHA is trying to evict our family from the home we built. And I've brought you the 2014 guidelines, which were in place at the time. And if you just... I've highlighted right down at the bottom, it says, this is the rule that applies. If the owner does not respond to the second compliance letter within two weeks and/or if the compliance situation is not fully resolved within 60 calendar days from the date of the first letter, a notice of violation will be sent. So the key phrase there is 60 days. If you'll turn, I have a timeline, because the mayor asked me to bring this in, and the timeline is on the second page, along with my resume. You'll see July 17th is the first compliance letter, and that is provided. And to verify, it's actually APSHA's Exhibit D to the lawsuit, okay? So July 17th, then the second compliance letter, that is Exhibit E, and the part that you want to look at is Exhibit F. So if you turn there, you'll notice that the date on the notice of violation is August 25th. That's not 60 days from July 17th. So why is that important? APSHA violated their own guidelines. And I'll repeat that. APSHA violated their own guidelines. They have never explained to the court. They have never apologized. Call or write a law in a case like this suggests sanctions. And I think that as... We're very, very grateful to live in this community, but the government has to abide by their own laws. And if you don't, George, if you don't think that we should get a hearing on that very... This very point, I don't know what to say. But you'll notice, if you turn to the page after the notice of violation, which is illegal, which is... Which was premature, you'll see that they sent me on October 14th a request to bring in eight different kinds of art records, okay? When I went in, they quoted. They said, I'm sorry, we can't... We can't look at that. They refused to look at the records because of the notice of violation date. Yes, sir.
Running out of time on this?
Yes, sir.
You've all taken this? You've put it in the public record? I'll read it.
Okay.
And everyone else has the option.
Did you have a copy for the public record?
Fantastic. Yes, sir. And would it be possible to have John verify the actual documents and give a report to you on it?
I think we've already asked them to review it, so I think that's... This has been done, I believe.
So this... Just so we're clear, this was discovered by our new attorney after the case had gone... Had was denied by the Supreme Court.
Got it, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
No, thank you for the time. I really...
We'll know about it. We know it's there.
And you understand, the reason we're here is because we've... In our heart, we know that our constitutional right to due process has been violated. But thank you for your time.
Thanks, Lee. Take care of that, Arm.
Okay, public comment is still open. Do we have anyone else? Sandy. Thank you for coming.
I'm Sandy Mulcahy, and yesterday, kind of unusual, I listened to my pastor's sermon from Texas. And he was teaching on Jesus's trial, and the fact that he used some words that really resonated with me. He said that it was a kangaroo court. And let me explain what that did to me. We have asked for our hearing for years, and it's been denied time after time. And what crossed my mind was this, that if we had had a hearing, then you would have been able to understand the violations that took place with APSHA. Because they, as Lee said, they violated their own rules. And then, as he also said, the new attorney pointed out that there were many violations. The law was broken. And so it's like, if the truth could be known, then maybe we would not be dealing with what occurred last week. We had a notice that a third party would be given the deed to the title, to the land. And what that means is that third party has the power and the authority to come to our home and say to us, you are trespassers. They can taser. They can send in a SWAT team. They can do whatever they want because they have the title. That is a little frightening. But, you know, I am 83. I have had a good life. God has blessed me. I've been involved in a ministry in Kenya, where we have done four water wells. We've scheduled four more for February of '20. We have given counseling to addicts and alcohol people with problems. And we have built a medical clinic and had a team come in and offer all kinds of medical assistance. We have given laptops to the schools and educational material, and that is kind of my... What shall I say? That's what I do in my spare time. But what has happened here, I really believe in my heart, is wrong. Because Fifth Amendment says, no one should be deprived of life, liberty, and property without due process. So that is the point that I make. And if they come to my home, I am not leaving. And if they drag me out, it's gonna be a pretty sad thing for the City of Aspen, because I think it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, public comment still open. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close the public comment, and we're gonna go to Commissioner comment.
I'll make a comment.
Patty?
I just want to thank people for being safe out there on the rivers and on the roads. The river is still running high, but not where we thought it was going to be. So please still remember to be safe out there when you're out there using the river. And I know that people... A lot of people are out there riding their bikes, going up and down the pass. It's been apparently keeping the local ambulance district a little busy lately, so for those of you who are out there on your bikes, please keep an eye and an ear open for all that other traffic that's out on the roads and on the trails. So it's beautiful. We're supposed to have lightning today, so also be wary of that. Enjoy, and don't forget, it's Mountain Fair Weekend in Carbondale, and let's support the Carbondale community.
Okay, George?
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate Aspen Theater and Park in collaboration with the Aspen Music Festival for a wonderful presentation show of South Pacific on Monday night. It was a great sellout event. It was a great opportunity to see Broadway actresses and actors, and our great music festival staff and students provide a wonderful evening with South Pacific. And I hope that we'll see future events like this in coming years.
Can I just ask? Isn't there an event coming up on the 4th with conjunction with the... With ACES? Does anybody know about that, the specifics? Do you know?
I don't know the specifics. There's about four things every day.
Well, this one's on... This one... No, this one is a joint venture with the Music Festival and with ACES, and I believe it's on August the 4th. So for those of you who have more information, keep in tune, because I think it's gonna be another great event out there. And I'm sorry I missed South Pacific.
Okay, yeah, you gotta get over there. Any other comment? Okay, we're gonna move right into consent items. This is single reading consent items, and I'm just gonna go down the list. I have a feeling that we're gonna be able to do these together. The minutes of the regular meeting of July 10th, ratification of the hearing officer's determinations on abatement petitions, resolution of the County Commissioners authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the State of Colorado Department of Local Affairs' Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Funds for the Historic Courthouse Renovation Project, and resolution of the Board of County Commissioners appointing members to the Aspen-Pitkin County Housing Authority. I think we can get a motion on all of those unless...
I will make a motion to approve, but I do want to make a comment on the APSHA appointments.
Second before the... Second?
And I don't seem to have the list, just to make sure, on the names. We generally... Steve's usually the one that always brings that forward, brings forward the names of the appointed folks, and I want to make sure I get them all correct. So we have Carson Schmitz, he's for a four-year term. John Ward, three-year term. Rickhead, two-year term. We're alternating those term limits because of... We're starting this new board. It'll take effect... They... It says March, but I think that's the effect of their terms, because that's when we do appointment interviews. Is that right? And then we have David Laufren, who is the alternate, and he is with a four-year term. I think this is great. We're off to a new start with the APSHA board. I think there's gonna be some great history there. I was hoping for a more of a mix of some new voices, both young voice and a more mature voice in the community. But this is where the Board and City Council, out of the 32 applicants, has decided to go, so I'm excited, and I want to thank those for coming forward, all the applicants who came forward and wanted to participate.
All in favor? I have one of your comments, sorry. About item number three, regarding the grant application from the Department of Local Affairs' Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Funds. Occasionally, I hear comments from county commissioners from counties that have lots of oil and gas drilling activities in their county. And their attitude is that all of those funds should remain in their counties, because they feel like they're the only ones being impacted by the mineral development. In this case, we are being required by the state to turn over the full use of our courthouse to the court system. The need for another courtroom and more... Another judge and more probation officers and whatnot is being driven largely by the fact that in Garfield County, they're... They have a lot of impacts from the gas development there that has driven the need for a greater court system. And since we're in the same judicial district with Garfield County, that impact from Garfield has come up to us and, you know, had an impact on our courthouse. So I think it is totally appropriate that we apply for the Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Funds for the work we're doing on our courthouse. Great, well put. Thank you. We had a... We're calling the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Moving right along, we're going to individual consideration items. First reading set for public hearings on August 14th. We have a resolution authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Colorado Court Security Fund, and if approved, accept the grant for the courthouse renovation project. And Jody Smith is here.
Jody Smith, Facilities Director. And yeah, the next two items, so the Court Security Fund Grant, this is just a formal request to the Board for me to submit the application, and then if we are awarded the funds, to go through and go ahead and accept them, since as the project is about to start. And I'm just really here to ask any... Or answer any questions. And Connie's here to answer questions if there's a budget-related item that you want to talk about there.
Questions? I think we're familiar with this one.
I just have a comment.
Comment?
I think it's great, because that's part of what we decided way back when we were taking on this project, was we were gonna look for grant opportunities anywhere and everywhere we could. So I think it's more than appropriate for us to be out there looking for whoever might help us out, because we want this to be an amazing project, and we're gonna need some help in getting it there.
Great.
I make a motion to approve, and this is a first reading set for public hearing on August 14th.
I'll second the motion.
So you're just doing the first reso?
Yes.
Just, yeah, these are one at a time. I'm gonna do one at a time. All in favor? Well, comment or question for Jody? Sure, go ahead. They have the four criteria for what localities would be given priority, and I believe we might only have qualified for one of those...
That is correct.
...out of the four criteria. What does that do to our chances of actually receiving this grant?
Do you want to take that one, John?
It reduces them.
Goes like this. Four would be better.
You know, this is some of what we've run up against with past grant applications. It doesn't change the fact, as you stated, Steve, that this is kind of a unfunded mandate for us to provide, and so we're trying to leverage... Trying to advocate for our taxpayers and leverage as many state funds in particular as possible to do this project. But depending on the grant cycle and who is in on this grant cycle and how they qualify for those, obviously, the more of those criteria you meet to be priority-funded, the higher you'll be on the list, and we only meet one of those.
And so if I may, we applied for $200,000 for our security checkpoint, all of the security cameras, those kinds of things, anything related with security. And we did get an initial letter notice telling us that they were going to... Because they've already gone through their review process, so that they're going to award us $13,000 out of that $200,000. And so... But what has happened is, since that time, they have opened up some additional funding. So we are going for that second round. So really, this still is applicable to apply for... I mean, just to continue to ask.
Keep going.
And as we get awards, we'll just accept them. So... And we've already adjusted our budget per one of our prior meetings on that, and I think we're on second reading for that discussion also for these.
Right. If I could... So it sounds as if, as Steve points out, our court system is certainly infected by doings in other counties regarding oil and gas, and that there's certainly impacts from other counties, yet we're only given... We're only rated on this four points as an individual county, and so it doesn't seem fair. And just in case the public wants to look at this, it's counties with a population below the state median, which we don't qualify for, right?
Right.
Are you talking median? I need to look at the requirements.
Right, okay. Yeah, we can get back to... It's on page one. I'm just thinking, counties with per capita income below state median, counties with property tax revenues below the state median, and then finally, it's counties with total population living below the federal poverty level is greater than the state median. So in one case, we actually qualify.
Right.
Oh, well, that's my only comment. Doesn't seem fair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Moving on, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners authorizing the submittal of a grant application to CORE, Community Office for Resource Efficiency, and if approved, accept the grant for the courthouse renovation. Jody?
Again, we've had various meetings with the Board to go after as many grants that we could that would meet our deadline. The application did go in. This is a formal process to approve the application submittal, and if awarded, accept that. And so we would be able to just hit the ground running with that. So this is first reading on that.
Got it, great. Any other comment questions on that one? Looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second? Further conversation on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks, Jody.
Thanks for coming. See you soon.
See you very soon.
Jody, thank you for coming today.
Okay, up next, we have an ordinance authorizing acquisition of the Lambert-Wilden property, and with our open space. And Dale and Ry are here.
Thanks, Greg. Let me get my... My picture's going on here. John, help me. How do I get to my... If you'd just get me to the... The drive. This is a open space acquisition that we've been working on for quite a while, and the need for it has been kind of dramatically demonstrated this summer as a result of our continuing inability to get on to the Falloha Meadows. Let's start with the Johnson Bridge photograph. The Wilden parcel sits just upstream of Falloha Meadows, and our access onto Falloha, this is sort of reason... Reason one, we've been working on this. This is the bridge that we have been using for the firefly walks and so on onto Falloha Meadows. Falloha Meadows is one of our premier properties, and it's closed most of the year to protect the biodiversity, but in the summer, we kind of compensate for that by working with the Roaring Fort Conservancy to have a series of naturalist events that all have relied on this bridge. Well, this bridge was kind of hillbilly engineered by Kelly Grange, I think, when he was working at the Mid-Continent Mine, and SGM took a look at it and told us not to use it until the river's dropped quite a bit. So to date, although Falloha's been open for these naturalist events per the management plan since July 1st, we've been unable to get over there. So the Wilden property, here if we can find it. There's a... I think it's area number three, shows you the alternative here. This is a photo... This is a photograph of the Wilden property looking back towards Falloha, and the property is contiguous with Falloha that we have put together to purchase here. Falloha sits kind of right about where the shadow starts and then reaches all the way back to Elephant Mountain. The Wilden property is sitting up in the foreground. You can see the roof of one of the houses on the, just on the right side of the river. We have 10 acres under contract to purchase that has a bridge and two residences and about 900 feet of the Crystal River, just south of the Falloha Nature Preserve. We were kind of joking around upstairs, calling this the Aloha Gateway Property to Falloha. But in any event, the purchase would serve multiple objectives of the open space program and hence the effort we've put into getting this in front of you. In addition to giving us an alternative bridge, the recent adoption of the Crystal Valley or the Carbonale-Cristibute Trail Plan highlighted the need for two things in the Crystal Valley, really regardless of the trail itself. And one of those is to have more of a presence for rangers in the valley. Based on our recent success of acquiring the property in Snowmass Canyon that has the residences on it, we're now leasing one of those to a CPW officer. This property is strategically located to also house some ranger people that could keep a better eye on all of our seasonal closures up and down the crystal, not the least of which is Falloha Meadows. To walk into Falloha from the adjacent neighborhood, you would have to walk right by this property. So we can really use that housing stock that's on the property. Similarly, the corridor plan identified the need to have more resources available for maintaining our properties in the Crystal Valley, and this property has a nice oversized garage that was built for heavy equipment. Again, a legacy of the Mid-Continent years, there's a large garage on the property that can hold equipment that might be needed by open space and trails, or the Forest Service, or CPW. In the last several years, we've had a series of controlled burns on the slopes on the right up above Falloha, and we've been in partnership with both those agencies on that. So that's another thing that this helps with. And then finally, one of the possible alignments of the Crystal Trail would, could utilize this property if the decision is made to ever put a trail in this section. As everyone, I think, understands, the first phase of that, per the plan, was the Redstone to McClure Pass section, and that section is under review by the Forest Service, and we're working on that. If and when that gets done, we will look at the Redstone to Penny Hot Springs possibility, and this could feature in that. The, maybe if we can go to the maps. The Open Space Board has unanimously recommended approval of this purchase, and this map, if it'll fully load here, shows you the property itself. It's, couldn't have been better configured for our various needs in that it reaches all the way from the Highway 133 right of way over to the corner of Falloha Meadows to create a connection there. And then if you scroll down, there's another map showing it in the context of Falloha Meadows is 184 acres. Again, one of our premier successes to date protecting this property that's got abundance of biodiversity, as well as a lot of historical features. And this property really could become to Falloha what the ACE's facility down here is to Hallam Lake and so on. It's perfectly configured to help us manage this, this open space. The, I mentioned the Open Space Board unanimously approved this at its last meeting. We've been talking about it for some time. The purchase price is 1.55 million for 10 acres, and the current landowners are thrilled to see this become part of open space. They've owned it since 2006. They were hoping to make a little more money on it, but as it stands, they're selling it to us for about what they paid for it in 2006. So we are comfortable that it's a good arrangement on both sides, and we ask that. You approved this on first reading and set it for final approval at a public hearing on August 14th.
I have a question.
Patty?
Could you further explain, and this map, this map will help, where, you know, where the bridge is now that we can't use because of high water, it's a little shaky bridge. So what happens then for people who would have wanted to do the Firefly Tours? They'd have to park somewhere, we're not sure, and then walk all the way up the road? Is that correct? And this, because of issues with those, that those tours attract, and how impossible it would be for some of those to attend those events?
Well, that's a great question. What we're currently doing is frankly, a bit of an ad hoc arrangement. The existing Johnson Bridge is labeled on the map here.
Right.
It's a little left of center there. And we own an easement to go through the Johnson property, and we have a 50% ownership of that bridge. But one thing we don't own down there at the Johnson property is any ability to park. The easement that we have doesn't include parking. So what we have been doing since the Firefly Walk started is asking people to carpool up and then leaving as many vehicles as we can at the pullout next to Penny Hot Springs. Now, of course, the Penny Hot Springs situation is in the news these days, and we're gearing up to try to address some of the management issues over there. But from Penny Hot Springs, then, we're essentially van pooling over to the Johnson property by the kindness of Barney Johnson. We've been able to park there and walk people over that bridge. The Wilden parcel will give us an alternative of having the people that attend those events actually drive onto the parcel and park on the county property, and then walk down the railroad grade from the Wilden parcel that's shown in pink here, is a nice walk down to the location where the Fireflies like to do their thing, which is back down closer to the Johnson Bridge. But, so the logistics of those events will actually improve with this property.
And allow more of the public to enjoy this portion of public land.
Correct.
George?
Thank you.
So Dale, the other, the other way to get into Falloha Meadows is coming in from the, by the north, Redstone Bridge, the road in there and then the trail. That has always been historically a way to get in. And again, right now, as happened maybe several years past, the, there's a neighborhood association there that is thinking that it's a private road and is looking at making that claim in court. So this would provide a sure access in and out of Falloha Meadows, depending on how that other situation comes out.
True. There's legal issues regarding this situation you described, and I don't know that we want to go into those now, but.
Closer to your mic.
But even, even with that trail easement, the history going back was that the subdivision in the, of the residential area between Falloha and the Redstone Campground included the dedication of a public trail. And what's happened since is there was a little remnant of the old Crystal Railroad grade that is near the Redstone Campground, and the association that maintains that remnant of the grade that's now a road obtained a quitclaim deed from the old, from the leftover Crystal Railroad interest for what's actually in the national forest. And we're having a discussion about just what they acquired and what they didn't. But, but even with that public trail down through there, our nearest parking is in Redstone. And so while people have enjoyed going in and out of there and that, on that route, as far as something like a Firefly Walk, it wasn't useful for that purpose. But you're correct, this acquisition will armor plate our access into the Falloha Nature Preserve.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Other comment, questions?
I was curious about the right-of-way, so thank you.
My question has to do with the acquisition of the right-of-way parcel, the 2.4 acres. Are we getting outright possession of that land, or are we getting an easement to go on the, that land, the 2.4 acres?
We're acquiring a fee simple interest in that, so we'll, we'll be the owner of that. That's one of the things that's taken a while to work out.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And that's how the property is now, 10 acres, when you combine the two parcels.
It looks like the walk from the parking at North Redstone Bridge is over a mile to the edge of Falloha.
Yeah, that's, that's something you'll do a few times, but in terms of accessing Falloha itself, it's, you know.
It's a long walk.
It's never gotten a lot of use, let me put it that way, so.
So going through this property, will you be able to drive equipment through on, from this property to go in and do maintenance on the Falloha Meadow property?
Yes, I was in there with our, our maintenance people just to make sure. There is a historic driveway out of the backside of the Wilden property onto the old railroad grade, that, it's a structure that's there now. And there's an opportunity to build a different route up to the corner if we decide to do that. But yes, the, the physical access is fairly easy to use.
Okay.
Dale?
I just want to point out that in the resolution, this, this would allow the county to sell a portion of this 10 acres in the future if we decide that certain elements of it don't meet the conservation goals here. So I just want you to speak to that, or what.
Sure.
Some brainstorming is around that right now. So it's not a surprise in the future if we do do that.
Right. And we've done that in the past where we've got structures that may or may not be part of our long-term needs for open space. The Emma Townsite is another example where we did that, so that in the future, for example, if it were decided that one of the two houses, like, most likely the upstream house on the Wilden property, weren't needed by the county, that we would have the flexibility to sell that on a smaller piece and reserve the downstream portion of it, or something like that. Or, you know, for that matter, if the county decided didn't want either one of those houses, we could reserve a conservation easement with whatever access easement we would want and, and sell the whole thing, subject to those restrictions. So it gives us flexibility and an opportunity to recoup some of our investment at a later time.
George?
Dale, what's the state of repair of those two houses?
They're currently rented, and so they're inhabitable. The upstream one is a nicer residence than the downstream one. We've been through the inspections and determined that there's, there's nothing there that would present a liability. I wouldn't say they're, they're luxurious by any means, but that's another thing that the open space maintenance people fully evaluated it, and they were comfortable taking over the maintenance of those and relationships with the current tenants, similar to what we did over at Deer Creek Ranch with the property the CPW now has.
Yeah, but Deer Creek Ranch, the CPW actually put in time and money in terms of making that up to code or habitable. In this case, you know, similar to Emma, we're, we've had to do a new roof, and I don't know if we'll need a new septic on here, but staff has scoped all that out.
We scoped it out. And with Emma, we, you know, we made rent on Emma for 10 years before we had to do any of that.
Right. All right, thanks.
So what's the current status of the current tenants? It's my understanding we're giving them some time because we have to do a management plan and et cetera, et cetera, or?
Well, you will have an opportunity to direct staff on that question. We've got legal obligations about what, what we can do, but the, the needs that the program has are long-term needs.
Right.
So I'm comfortable that we'll be able to.
So that's for further discussion when we get to that point.
The tenants are currently on month-to-month tenancies right now, and there has been a discussion about how much, providing them with ample lead time on a notice if we are going to repurpose those structures or something, so they have ample time to find additional housing or something like that.
Want to make sure that we're not putting anybody out.
But that decision hasn't been made, so.
You know, in an immediate fashion, so, okay.
That's not like us.
I know. I want the public to hear that.
Do you know from your memory, what does this bring our total investment up to for Falloha Meadows?
That's a good question. Well.
Good question.
Can I bring that back on second reading?
Yes, of course, thank you.
The total, it's, it's in, this would make that total up around four and a half.
I just wondered about the, we've got riverfrontage. We've just bought some riverfrontage. Is this going to be something the fishermen will appreciate? Is there fishing access, and is it a fishable section? Is there a value in that piece of property alone?
Another great question, and by, by luck, we are gearing up to revise the Falloha Management Plan next year. We had initially thought we'd do that this year with the Penny Hot Springs revisions, and now the, the staff have decided to just do Penny Hot Springs separately and do Falloha next year. So we will be able to take a look at that reach of river and think about what the best kind of management would be and how it fits with what else is going on at Falloha.
That's a great question. So we'll bring this piece into the Falloha Management Plan, because it's.
Correct. It's a pretty nice piece of river.
Okay.
Well, I'd make a motion to, to approve the acquisition of the Lambert-Wilden property. And again, this is first reading, except for public hearings on August 14th.
And I will second.
We have a second. Further conversation? All in favor?
Aye, thanks, guys.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Congratulations. I know this took a lot of effort to.
Kudos to Ry for working through.
Good job, Ry.
Lot of detail.
He looks tired. Take a break, Ry.
That's from the kid.
It's the kid.
Poor Emily West gets blamed for everything these days.
Moving right along, folks.
This is this morning, Ry.
We're going to go to individual consideration items, public hearings, a public hearing, single reading. This is an application for a special events liquor permit submitted by Friends of the Animal Shelter.
And Greg, Jeanette was not able to be here today, and so I'll just take the, the opportunity, this is a special event liquor license that's been applied for by Friends of the Animal Shelter to be held on July 28th from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Animal Shelter, 101 Animal Shelter Road. This is an event that has occurred for several years.
Fifth annual.
Fifth annual, yeah. And, you know, the, the board has issued a special event liquor license for the past several years. Did you have one for all five?
Yes.
Oh, for all five years, sorry. And there's never been any issues associated with the event. Seth is here to go over the, you know, highlights of the event and answer any questions.
Questions?
Do the, do the dogs prefer beer, or do they prefer?
Our dogs just drink the City of Aspen water. Because we were told it's fantastic for them.
Identify yourself for our.
So my name is Seth Saxon, and I'm the director of the Aspen-Picken County Animal Shelter, and I'm also today here as the president of Friends of the Aspen Animal Shelter, our nonprofit. So we produce this, this event jointly, and I sort of just give over the facility for the day to our nonprofit friends, which we formed back in the 90s to build the Aspen-Picken County Animal Shelter, and we were supposed to dissolve afterwards and let the self-sustaining facility continue, as I had run it for 15 previous years. But our nonprofit went from a grassroots group to a somewhat well-oiled machine. our nonprofit went from a grassroots group to a somewhat well-oiled machine, and we spay and neuter over 1,000 pets a year, and we take in 300 homeless animals a year from outside of our jurisdiction, from the Navajo Indian reservations to puppy mills, and, so we're doing good stuff, and it's, it's sort of what I, I call the icing on the cake. So, so the Aspen-Picken County Animal Shelter is doing just great, and this is above and beyond, and we're, we're not only helping Aspen-Picken County and the Roaring Fork Valley, but we're reaching well beyond. And the event, it was a, do I have two minutes to give you a little? I, I, this feels kind of deja vu-ish, so I don't know if I've told you the whole story before, so I'll, I'll say it quickly.
Not me, so.
Okay, I'll say it quickly. So, basically, for many, many, many years, starting in 99, we formed a nonprofit to build the new facility, and we started having events at, at Sam and Cheryl Wiley's Ranch in, in Woody Creek, and then for probably four years, we had disco parties out at my place in Old Snowmass, and they were awesome, and we raised money, and we had events ranging from John Oates and Emmylou Harris and Sean Colvin playing and doing private dinner parties for us, to bringing Caesar Milan out, and, and, you know, just to name drop, Bernadette Peters, you know, it's been a, a great ride, it's been amazing. And the only negative that I heard from friends and, and people in the community, for a couple years after those events, is they said, Seth, you're, you're just, it was, it's awesome, it's great, I, I heard it was amazing, I couldn't go, you're pricing out the locals. And so I, we had, we always have a debrief, debriefing board meeting after our events, and so I just said, hey, guys, I, I have an idea, you know, it, it has been great, and we have Robert Wagner's on our board and Jill St. John, and, and I auction off RJ to go play golf with people at the Moon Creek Club and eat lunch afterwards, and Jill St. John to go for a walk on the Rio Grande Trail and go to luncheon town, you know, it's just awesome, it's awesome. But I said, how about we take a break for, and this is like five, six years ago, I said, let's take a break for a year and just have a, a community party to give back to the community where no one has to spend any money, and so what if we lose money or break even, it's no big deal. And that's the, the great thing about, that the Aspen-Picken County Animal Shelter is self-sustaining, and the animals with homes support the animals without homes, so the boarding animals, the pet shop, the grooming generates revenue to support the whole thing, so it's not like we're desperate for that, that dollar to, to pay the rent and the utilities, and our, our dollars are used to spay and neuter and rescue animals, which is very important. And the board thought it was a great idea, and so, and then we called, I'll speed it up, 'cause I could talk all day, we called, somebody said, Seth, Elizabeth Slossberg of EKS Events, she mentioned to you many, many years ago that she'd love to help produce our events, and I'm kind of controlling, and I told her, we're good, we're good, and, and, so I never, and I didn't even remember this, and they said, you know, maybe she can help us with this, and I said, okay, I don't remember, but I'll call her, and I called Elizabeth, and I said, hey, I don't remember this, but do you remember, and she said, she's a very dynamic woman, full of energy, and she said, Seth, of course I remember, what are you talking about? And I said, well, we could use your help, do you wanna produce a community event? So, EKS Events, Elizabeth Slossberg comes in, and fast forward, run our, our, our fifth annual, and what started out as sort of a break-even event, now it's so fun and everybody comes for free, and it's good times with a dunk tank and a bounce house for kids and the fire departments there.
Dog bath.
And the free dog bath, and we have adoptable puppies and kittens and cats and dogs, free food from all the restaurants in town, ranging from Cash Cash to, to Home Team BBQ, to the Hotel Jerome is there, it's sponsored by the Elliott Erie Gallery this year, and hosted by Joshua Landis, realtor in town, and Kim Raymond, an architect. But what has happened, to sum it all up, is we were doing this just to give back, and then we were gonna go back to these disco, I, I love disco, so that's why we were doing disco. We call it dancing for the dogs, and it was really fun, dance all night. But basically what happened is, the events were so fun that people started saying, hey, I wanna sponsor this, I wanna be a part of this, and so from Ish, who owns All Valley Maintenance and Mechanical, he starts saying, I, I wanna be a sponsor, I'm gonna give some money to, you know, on and on and on, and so now, we're making as much money by having a free event for the community as we did when we brought Bernadette Peters here, no offense to Bernadette, I love her, but it's, but it's true, it's really funny that after like three or four years, we finally hit that point, and I said like, oh my God, it's free, but we just made more money and didn't have to work as hard, and everybody's happy. So, what I love about it, to sum up everything, is it's a community event, yes, at the end of the day, it's about the animals, our tagline for our nonprofits, it's all about the animals, but we, we say that, 'cause it's like, yes, at the very, very end, but there's a lot of, a lot of other stuff going on. So what's neat, if you, if you know that the animals are the, the main concern, but what's great is it's a community party, and you have from, from, you know, toddlers to, to senior citizens, and if you wanna listen to music, we have Scott Dolginnow and, and Mark Patterson from Paradise Bakery, Scott's a vet in town, they have a band called Midnight Lightning, and they come and play.
I didn't know that.
And people love them, and there's just something for everyone, you know.
Time and date.
Okay, so, Sunday, July 28th, this coming Sunday, from 11:00 to 3:00, and everybody's welcome, and just once again, the community's been amazing, like, the fire department's there, and not only are they showing the kids the fire trucks and the kids can spray the, the hose and everything, but they're there as our medics, and it's just so beautiful how the community comes together and it rocks out.
About parking transportation.
Seth, thank you, that's great.
Thank you, parking, do you wanna know, or?
Yeah, just so the public knows.
In one answer, City of Aspen, the, the snow dump, Jerry Nye is always amazing, and he opens up the snow dump for us, and we park in the snow dump and takes care of everything, and we have shuttles coming from the gondola, free shuttles from the gondola, as well as Brush Creek Intercept Lot, and they're dog-friendly.
Excellent, thank, dog-friendly shuttles, what a concept, thank you, that's great.
So 11, 11 to?
11 to 3, Sunday, July 28th.
This is a public hearing, does anybody want to say anything?
Can you talk a little bit about the liquor being served?
Yes, so.
That's why we're here.
That's, that's an interesting question, I, I, I don't drink, and no, not, you know, I have no.
For the cats and dogs, we know.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I, initially I thought, well, we, we don't need a liquor license, like, why do we need liquor, and then it's a bunch, it's a lot of, there are some single adults who are there, and there's a lot of pretty girls there and handsome men, and, but there, it's a lot of families and kids, you know, it's a lot of kids playing, so I said to the board, well, what do we need to deal with an alcohol license, what, what do we need that for? But there, they, many, I was taught, Bland Nesbit, who's on our board, taught me well, and then she said, people like to drink, and so we do serve, like, Meachola is gonna be there, and they serve margaritas, Tito's vodka, donate vodka.
All in a controlled environment.
But it's all in a controlled environment, there's no, what I love about it is, it's a very pure event, and there's no crazy drunkenness, and, and, I, I don't even notice the alcohol, you know, it's not like people are just slamming beers and stuff like that, and it's very, very, very family-oriented, and, and it's, it's fun. And we tent in the whole parking lot, so you're out of the, out of the sunshine.
Patty?
Real quick, I'm definitely gonna support it, I think I've been every year.
Yeah.
I didn't think I was gonna make it this year, I just rearranged my plans so I could be there.
Oh, nice.
But, but before we move forward on our approval, I wanna congratulation, congratulate you on your new daughter.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
I wanna say Charlie?
Henry Rose, another androgynous name.
Yeah.
So, but we spell it, my wife's uncle unfortunately died a year ago, and I had naming opportunities for a boy, and she, she had them for a girl, and.
Sounds like Kelly.
She said, let's, let's name a, can we name the da, you know, our daughter after, after my uncle, and he was a nice guy, and I got to know him, and I said, yeah, let's just feminize the name.
It's a great name, so congratulations.
So, cool, thank you.
Congratulations.
Steve? So Seth, you were going head-to-head with the Mountain Fair in Carbondale.
Yeah.
And what I would urge people to do is to plan their weekend ahead of time, go to the Mountain Fair on Friday evening or on Saturday, and then that frees up their time to go to your event on Sunday.
I love that idea. Cool, thanks. Yeah, we're not, we're not worried, we don't wanna compete, but we're not worried, and it, it's always a really great time, and come enjoy.
Excellent, thank you. Public hearing, does anyone wanna submit a comment on this topic? Looking like that's not, nobody wants to.
I will make a motion to approve, 'cause I think I do every year make the motion to approve.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second the motion. We have a second, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Seth.
Thanks, guys, I have, it's, it's odd to be up here without Jeanette holding my hand, so I have a check that I was gonna give to her for the.
This is.
Give that to Julia.
Do you know Julia? This is Julia Ely, this is, she's our Jeanette for the day.
How many of these do you pass the vote?
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Alright, thanks, Seth.
Yeah.
Okay, here we, we're still in a public hearing, this is another individual consideration item, second reading, and it's the resolution providing supplemental appropriations to the 2019 budget, and amending the 2019 budget for courthouse renovation Castle Creek Trail and youth zone. And Jody and Connie are here, and VR.
GR for the trail. Good afternoon, Connie Baker, and not as interesting as the party out at the animal shelter, but, so we're here for the second reading of budget resolution, a little bit outside of our normal cycle. This brings a net increase to Picken County budget of $975,385. It includes a $25,000 contribution to the youth zone for their capital campaign, and then it has these two large projects, the courthouse remodel. For the courthouse remodel, we are increasing the overall budget by $920,000, but we're offsetting part of that cost with some, with delaying a few other facilities projects to 2020, and then also by applying some of our additional sales tax, which we've already received January through April, to the project. So the impact is zero impact to the capital fund, but $427,000 from the general fund to support the project. On the Castle Creek Trail, the total increase to the project budget is $1.1 million. Some of that, 579,000 of that is for the city's portion of the trail, their cost has more than doubled, but that will be paid for by the city, but the project is funneled through the county. So the impact of the Castle Creek Trail, the supplemental, is an additional $301,000 from the open space fund balance, and $221,000 from road and bridge fund. And if you have any questions on the projects themselves, GR and Jody are here to speak to those.
Nick, can we move forward on the Castle Creek Trail now?
Yes, that's our intent, Patty.
Okay, 'cause I know people have been waiting for many years, and I'm glad we redesigned it, we're really concerned about public safety, and we're really concerned about that rock fall section, which is, I believe, the reason behind this increase in budget, that we're, we're not gonna just do it, we're gonna do it right.
Yes.
So I appreciate that.
Other questions on any of these? I think we've seen them before, we've pretty much gone through them in detail. So I'd make a motion to approve.
Public hearing.
Oh, it is a public hearing, oh, well, can we, motion first? This is a public hearing, if anybody would like to speak on this topic, this is your chance, if not, I'm gonna close it back up. Steve, go ahead. So I'd like to make a motion approving the resolution, providing these supplemental appropriations to the 2019 budget.
I'll second.
And we have a second, further discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You made it easy for us, thank you. Alright, we're moving into land use items, land use public hearings. This first is an ordinance amending Title VIII of the Pitten County Code, specifically the 2006 Land Use Code to amend the following sections of the Land Use Code, Section 72030C, Water Courses and Drainage, and Section 72040 Flood Plane Regulations. This is first reading, and set for a second reading on August 14th. Catherine?
Hello, my name is Catherine Kristoff, I am the planning engineer in the Kewee Development Office, I was just waiting, assume Cindy will pop in momentarily, but today I'm asking you, first reading, to accept two code amendments, the first of which relates to water courses and drainage, and the second of which relates to our flood plane hazards. So the first section, Section 72030 relating to water courses and drainage, right now, we don't have an exemption in our code for smaller projects from hiring a licensed engineer to do a drainage analysis, so we would be amending the code to exempt activities and development that disturb less than 1,500 square feet. Additionally, in that section of the code, we are seeking to specify design storm to be used on those larger projects, where we do require that someone hire a licensed engineer. Right now, we just have a section in the code that says you must maintain historical drainage patterns, and it's a bit vague, so it leaves both myself as the revision engineer and the design engineer a bit unclear on what they should do. So, we've proposed that we have a standard of a 25-year return frequency, 24-hour duration storm, that folks design to, so that they're maintaining the runoff, or they're maintaining the drainage patterns that would occur from that type of event, and also that they would provide for safe passage of a 100-year event, a larger storm event. That's the same, same standard that is used in Garfield and Eagle Counties, so it seems appropriate for our, our rural sending. And then the second code amendment related to flood plane hazards, that, there's, there's two portions to that code amendment as well, the first of which relates to updates to our regulations, so that it's in conformance with the Colorado, with the CWCB standards in Colorado. It's mostly just wordsmithing and providing further clarification and consistency of the language in that code section, but then the second part of that code amendment relates to our mapping project that's been going on since 2009, and actually, I haven't, you may know that I was with the county previously, and initially got the grant money to do this work in 2009, then I left, went to grad school, got married, had a baby, did a whole bunch of other things, and 10 years later, here we are.
Right where you left it.
We're still not done yet, yeah. So, we're back, and.
Finally.
We're excited that finally, they'll be adopting, FEMA will be making these new maps effective on August 15th, so we're, we're going through this process to get, get those new maps codified in our code, so we'll have that ready to go when they become effective.
At least your baby's not in college yet.
Yeah, thank goodness. So, I think that's it for me, if you all have any questions, and like I said, this is first reading, and the second reading will be scheduled for August 14th.
Patty?
It was very interesting reading, a lot, a lot of it, a lot of maps, and we've been waiting for this for a long time, and, and just, I don't know if you're aware of this, but I've been the one that's been getting these packets for some reason, and I get these very official notices, that I'm getting something very official, and I'm getting really excited, and I've been getting all this stuff from the federal government, so, for a while it made me nervous, but I was passing it right on to you. I do have a question, and I'm not sure that I understand it, and hopefully you can explain it, about insurance and insurance premiums, and how adopting this into our code will help those who are required to have flood insurance.
Sure, so through our adoption of updated regulations and the newest maps and other things we do, like Valerie's efforts to get out the word about flood hazards and things like that, we, that's all part of the National Flood Insurance Program, and we're rated as a community through the community rating system, and because we do these things, we're able to provide our citizens with a 10% discount on their flood insurance, so this is in keeping with that and providing our citizens that benefit.
How would they avail themselves of that? Do they go to their insurance company and say, Picken County, do they have any proof of evidence, anything they have to come to you and get, or?
Um, I've never, I've never been asked to provide anything, I think I'm also, I sent out a letter to all of the lenders that I'm aware of in the valley, and real estate agents and planners and so on, on an annual basis, so I think they're aware of that, but if folks have any questions, they can always give me a call, and I'll make sure they have the documentation.
I was speaking with someone last night, and she had looked at the, thought on our agenda, that the flood plain, and she lives in a flood plain, and I said, you know, I think there's part of this that you may wanna research this a little more with whoever is providing your flood insurance, and she was surprised, 'cause no way had ever mentioned it to her, she was paying the full rate, as far as she knew. So I think unless you ask, you probably pay the full rate.
Yeah.
So this is a great benefit to our public, and I appreciate that.
Kelly?
Can you just clarify for me, under the requested amendments, what is required in order to bring us up to line with the FEMA mapping, and what we're doing, kind of just in parallel timing with this update?
Um, well FEMA has basically done everything that they are planning to do, and the maps are finalized from their end. There, there was a long process, I believe it started at 2015 and went on through 2019, where there was a back and forth with some of our citizens that had objected to the maps, and, and they worked with FEMA to, to come to some, I guess, conclusion on, on how the maps in the area would be addressed, but at this point, the maps are really finalized, and we're now in a six-month period where the local jurisdiction, they presume will adopt these maps and kind of codify them finally.
So is the, the exemption for small projects, and then the specification of a design storm, separate? separate from needing to make these updates in our, these other updates in our code to comply with the insurance and mapping requirements?
Right, they're unrelated, but I took the opportunity of being in front of you to bring forth another code amendment that we thought seemed necessary.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Patty?
That just reminds me, there, Cindy, I know that you're here, but there were seven years ago, I can't remember when it was, before you were married, after, the baby, or, T. Lazy Seven, Maroon Creek County issue, along that section with some mapping. Do you remember that? And I think that they, they were able to amend it. It had something to do with where they were going to put their snow melt. Remember their, their snow storage? Remember that? Okay, maybe, I'll, I'll ask Catherine between now and second reading, just to make sure that, that I, it might have been, might have been done way back, and it's already been amended and addressed, but this might be an opportunity for us to, to make sure that this is part of it. And, but yeah, I'll, I'll come and talk to you guys, because we have records about when we were approving their snow storage opportunities up there, we were concerned about where, where it was, because there would still be snow there when we had the potential for flooding because of runoff, there would still be snow stored there, and we didn't want it, the waste from that snow to be carried down the river. So I'll, I'll come and talk to you and clarify that.
Same question.
Kelly?
So if, if the new mapping comes as a shock to a property owner, or, you know, they're not, haven't been paying attention, and now, and adoption, they recognize what's happened, is there any process for them to appeal this, or request a revisit and review?
Um, I think the process at this point would be to go through a letter of map revision, or a letter of map change. It's a FEMA process where they would need to present adequate hydrologic and hydraulic analysis to FEMA, and then they can get the map changed in their area. And if folks would like help in that process, I'd be more...
Do those tend to be pretty lengthy?
Um, as you can imagine, since this lasted 10 years, they...
I appreciate that clarification, thank you.
Great, okay, Steve. Does the FEMA mapping take into account wintertime flooding from ice jams in the rivers?
Um, I don't believe that it does. They did not re-study the hydrology as part of this effort. It was really a re, a redo of the hydraulic analysis, so it was with new LiDAR data, new survey data, kind of more ground proofing to our river systems. So the hydrology hasn't been updated since 84. And I have a feeling at that point, it was not taken into account.
Yeah, it seems like in this area, that wintertime flooding is perhaps more likely than springtime flooding, because the ice, a bunch of ice blocks would jam the water a lot faster than, say, one or two logs going down the river during the spring runoff.
Mm-hmm.
Could cause a little tiny bit of flooding, but I was just curious if that was taken into account.
I don't think it was, and if that was something that we wanted to look into fur- into further, I think that would be something that the county would need to initiate versus FEMA, but we could look into that.
And Kelly, just, and Kelly's question too, it is on page 61 of our packet, under E. Floodplain Maps, item number two, about how, and the property owner believes that mapping was inaccurate in the process. It's, it, on here, it looks really simple, but I have a feeling, since it's the federal government, it is not.
And I will say, I did work with FEMA, so there's two parts of the mapping. There's areas that have a detailed study, and areas that do not have a detailed study. And previously, we had a blanket statement in the code that said, I could take best available data, if it was known best available data, and, and take that into account in doing our review. At this point, FEMA won't let that happen, where they've done a detailed study. But if we have a citizen that lives in an area where there hasn't been a detailed study, in some of our more rural areas, further up Maroon Creek and Castle Creek, I believe portions of West Sobers Creek, anyway, they can come in and talk to us, if they've, you know, brought on an engineer and done some of that analysis. And in those scenarios, we might not have to put them through a longer FEMA process.
I'm glad we noted that as part of the process.
Okay, how are we doing? This is a public hearing, if anybody wants to comment on this?
Let me explain that, I see Cindy's question. It's listed on our agenda, as, under land use items, land use public hearings. So Greg and I talked, and Greg made a wise decision, we're going to just open public hearings for today and on the 14th.
But I don't see anyone, so seeing no one here this week, we're going to close that back up and bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve, and set for second reading and public hearing on August the 14th.
Second? A second from Steve. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, great, thanks for coming in, Catherine. Finally.
Thank you, yeah.
Only 10 years, we've been waiting for you. Okay, up next is item number 11, it's Resolution granting approval to AWL West LLC for a major amendment to a development permit, GMQS exemption for additional floor area using a TDR, subdivision exemption for a minor plat amendment, activity envelope, and site plan review. Tammy's here, and you have guests.
We need to make sure everybody has a mic in front of them, too.
Yeah, Tammy, pull that mic over. Great to see you.
Okay, all right, so, right, Tammy Cochran, Pittcock County Planner. The applicant for this item is AWL West LLC, represented by Glenn Horn to my right. So this subject property is located at 61 Stillwater Lane. It's more specifically described as Lot 2 of the Stillwater Ranch subdivision. The parcel contains approximately two acres, and it's within the AR 2, 2-zone district. Glenn has come up with this great vicinity map here, and you can see that the subject lot, Lot 2, is just south of Highway 82, east of Aspen, south of the Roanoke River, located here. Lot 1, which contains the Stillwater Ranch Employee Housing, is, is just to the east of Lot 2. So just a little bit of background, in 1994, Fritz and Fabien Benedict submitted a residential GMQS application for five additional residential allotments, located in what is now, as you can see, outlined in blue, the Stillwater Ranch subdivision. The key commitments in that application included a dedication of Lot 1, for de-restricted affordable housing to Pittcock County, dedication of Lot 5 to Kids Staff Foundation, the dedication of a new trail easement, and floor area reductions on lots 2, 3, and 4, to eliminate any visual impacts to Highway 82.
Hey Tammy, if I could, or Glenn? I'm just looking at the, well Fritz, Fritz Benedict, just to set the record, is, it was Frederick Benedict was his, his real name, right? And then Fabienne is F.A.B.I.E.N.N.E., the female of Fabienne, you know, so it's, just want to get the names spelled right.
Sure, sure.
For, for what it's worth, it'd be good to have that.
So at that time, in that GMQS application, like I said, those floor areas were reduced on those subject lots, due to concerns and staff's memorandum, which noted that they were concerned with the visual impacts to Highway 82 and the neighboring properties. And so, in response, the Benedicks voluntarily did reduce those floor areas on those lots. So on December 30th, 1994, the BOCC approved the Stillwater Ranch subdivision, and those commitments were completed thereafter. Some subsequent approvals on the lot include mostly minor plat amendments, and those have to do with just minor changes to the building envelope, there was a change to an easement, and also a landscaping envelope, and a retaining wall envelope. So right now, the lot is currently developed with a residence, a single-family residence containing 6,500 square feet of floor area. So like Greg mentioned, the applicant is now requesting to amend that subdivision approval, which limited that maximum floor area to 6,500, and, and to instead allow 7,526 square feet. And that 7,526 square feet is the floor area that would be prohibit, permitted in the AR 2-zone district with the use of a TDR, had those restrictions not been placed on that lot. And so, in order to build the addition that they want, they also need to amend the building envelope, which means they need to do a minor plat amendment to amend that plat, as well as an activity envelope, site plan review. So this application was referred to the Stillwater Ranch HOA, the east of Aspen caucus, the zoning officer, and the attorney's office. Letters of support were recently submitted by neighbors within the Stillwater Ranch. Those neighbors are Thomas Reagan, Chuck Bellock, Madeline Morrison, and those were included in your packet. And an objection was also received from the Stillwater Ranch Employee HOA, which is also in your packet. This past week, Glenn has been working pretty hard, probably, to address a lot of the concerns raised in that objection letter. Most of that didn't get into the packet, the objection was submitted right before the packet was completed, so I'm going to let Glenn speak to all those new materials that he has come up with in regards to those concerns. But in summary, a new visual impact study was done to assess impacts to the employee housing lot. A wildlife and wildfire report was done by Jonathan Losky, to assess the impacts of wildlife and wildfire. He also completed a Stillwater Bridge analysis done by SGM. I think it's still preliminary, but he'll have that report to speak to. He also, let's see, oh, the, the Stillwater Ranch, a resolution of amendment to the protective covenants for the Stillwater Ranch subdivision was fully executed and notarized, which allow for those additional square feet in that, on those lots. And lastly, he is verbally committed to addressing all the concerns dealing with construction management, so, right, I'll let Glenn speak to that in a little bit. So back to the application, the first part of the application is for a major amendment to a development permit, and that is to amend that, that floor area restriction. As noted before, it was voluntary, and it was done to ease concerns about visual impacts. And within the packet, there were lots of representations of what you could, could see from Highway 82. Staff did, or I did a, a site visit and confirmed that, right, it, due to all the vegetation, kind of a landform berm, and the house being at a lower elevation, that you really cannot see the existing house as it currently is from Highway 82. The addition, actually, sorry. So this is the most current plat showing the existing house. This is the proposed, well, proposed amendment to the activity envelope. Let me see here, so this is better representation. So the proposed addition, how do I mount?
Grab it.
Is this grayed-out area, which is southwest of the, of the house. So to give you an idea, Highway 82 is over here, the Stillwater Ranch Employee Housing is over here to the east. So this addition is located behind the house. It's at a lower elevation, they're sinking it partially into the ground, and there's, there's ample amount of vegetation of north of the house, between the house and the, and the addition, which screens the addition. So staff does not believe that the addition would be seen by anyone driving along Highway 82. And it's highly unlikely that it would be also seen from the Stillwater Ranch condos. And Glenn has done a further analysis, which he'll, he'll speak to in a little bit, of what those impacts are going to be to that employee lot. So, I'm sorry, here, lost my spot. So this, this lot is also within the urban growth boundary, so it should be noted that the use of TDRs are allowed without special review, to develop up to your maximum floor area, and that is, in our code, it's kind of encouraged to place all the, the density and, and the additional floor area within these urban areas. So that's why they don't need to go through special review. And lastly, the applicant has noted that this restricted floor area has been lifted on lots 1, where the employee housing is located, as well as on Lot 4. Recently, the BOCC lifted that restriction to allow that lot to develop up to 7,600 square feet. All right, so if the request is approved, the applicant, like I said, will obtain a TDR to develop the proposed 1,026 square foot addition. The applicant has stated that the remaining 1,474 square feet of the TDR would not be utilized, and so staff has drafted that as a condition in the resolution, that no further expansion be done with that TDR. Okay, so the second part of this application is the request for a minor plat amendment. And like I said before, that's essentially to allow that addition to be located on that south side, and to amend that envelope, to just bump out a little bit from around that, that addition. So the code states that a subdivision exemption for a minor plat amendment may be approved if the amendment does not affect the degree of compliance with the standards of the Landes Code, and the amendment being made to a recorded plat has been approved by Pittcock County, and the amendment is consistent with representations made during the conceptual and detailed subdivision reviews, which appears applicable. So staff believes that the proposed amended envelope is generally consistent with the representations made. It's not any larger than it needs to be to accommodate that addition, and it complies with the rest of the Landes Code, which I'll address right now. So the third part is the request for activity envelope and site plan review. So that entails landscape and vegetation protection, so in order to build this addition, the applicant will need to remove a few of the trees, yeah, I don't know if it's more than two or three, maybe, oops, sorry, but nothing along the north side, or on this east side, which is providing all the screening to the highway and to the other lots. And the applicant has agreed to comply with all the, the standards in that code section. The addition is not located on steep slopes, so slopes over 30%. It is located quite close to steep slopes, as you can see, it does bump right up to this edge, slopes over 45%. The applicant has appropriately engaged a certified professional engineer, who has recommended that they do, oops, sorry, I, what do they call it, a, a-frame micropile system. And that basically is something like, the system shown here. So that's basically gonna control the slopes, those steep slopes, just to the, to the west of the addition. So the addition would be built on top of the, I guess, mesa, for a lack of better words, over here, and this micropile system would go in to support that steep slope close by. All right, and then the other standards which staff believes are implied with are the wildlife standards. There are no significant mapped wildlife habitat on this lot, so the applicant has committed to comply with those general criteria in that section. Most recently... Most recently, Glenn has hired Colorado Wildlife Sciences LLC to further study the impacts to wildlife, and he'll speak to that. Same goes for the wildlife or wildfire hazards. This lot is mapped as a low wildfire hazard area, which does not require a report to be done, but Glenn has since done a report by that same group. They have recommended that the standards, our standards in the Landes Code be maintained, as well as they did provide a couple of additional standards or recommendations to the conditions in the drafted resolution. So, I've included some of his recommended additional conditions shown here in red. And essentially, in summary, there, he's recommending that some of the trees to, between Lot one and two, be pruned up to decrease that ladder feel. And, yeah, more or less, I'll let Glenn speak to that. But, again, by doing that, pruning up, staff doesn't believe that that's going to significantly affect some of those scenic impacts to that Lot one. And, let's see. And then, the last section is the solar section. So, within the application, the applicant has committed to offsetting the energy required for that addition. They've engaged a resource engineering group to assess those energy demands. That report wasn't in when I did this packet, so I'll let Glenn present those findings as well. But, right, they've essentially agreed to offset all those impacts. So, staff has drafted a condition regarding that commitment. However, I suggest to the commissioners that maybe a more detailed condition be made in that resolution that is in alignment with the findings of that report. So, in summary, staff believes that the application complies with the associated Landes Code standards, and therefore recommends approval of the request.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy. A couple of questions and comments. I like the fact that the applicant has committed to utilize indigenous earth toned materials or colors on the exterior surfaces and roofs will have a non-reflective composition. I think that's great as we look at other projects going forward. And I also like the fact and commend the applicant that they will be offsetting any additional, the additional energy consumption utilizing solar panels. I would add on that, based on your suggestion and staff's, that we have some sort of monitoring to ensure that that actually is happening, that it is offsetting. And there's ways that that can be done fairly easily. Otherwise, we really have no idea. Does this come with a normal vesting period, or is that included or not necessary?
So, there's vesting associated with the activity envelope and site plan. In terms of the major amendment to allow the additional floor area, that portion would not, that would be in perpetuity, would not be vested.
Okay, so that's normal, you don't...
Regular.
I just wonder, because we have several other lots in this subdivision, if this is going to sort of set the stage for other owners to come in and ask for similar increase in house sizes. Has staff discussed that and have any issues with that?
You know, like I mentioned before, it is in the UGB. It's in the AR2 Zone District, which would otherwise allow larger homes. Lot one, like I mentioned, that restriction has been lifted. Lot four, it's already been lifted.
We lose Lot three. So, five.
I can address that. We calculated the potential for additional floor area on lots three and four, and there isn't the capability under zoning to increase the amount of floor area on those lots. So, I don't think you would see any precedent set for lots three and four.
Is that because of the size of those lots, Glenn?
Yeah. We calculated, you know, what can be done based upon the site. There is a sliding scale floor, it's not really a floor area ratio, it's a sliding scale in the AR2.
Okay.
And so, we just did estimates of what could be done, and this is the only lot in this section of Stillwater that could have any increase. Lot five is in the city of Aspen. It got an X, that was Andrea Jager's kids' facility, so that got an X to the city.
Yeah. And staff agrees with that assessment?
I haven't done the analysis like Glenn has, but...
Yeah, I'd want to, is this a two read, this is not a two read, is it? It's one read. Yeah, I'd want to make sure that's the case, because otherwise, we would subject ourselves to other lot owners coming in. I mean, I trust Glenn, but I just want to make sure that...
Can I just tag on, George, to that? Because on the reso, I mean, on the, on the agenda item summary, the memorandum, it says the limitation on Lot four was already lifted, so that only really leaves Lot three left for this to be changed, right? Four's been done, one's been done, two would be the second and three. What's the square footage on Lot three? So, it's developed?
Sixty-five hundred.
So, it's sixty-five hundred on Lot three?
The limit, yeah.
So, Lot three could come in for, we don't know what the, you've already now analyzed that?
We calculated, because we went through a process to look at amending the covenants for the subdivision, and it wasn't possible to add any more floor area on three. And Lot four got set by the board at seventy-six hundred back in 2010, when they came in for an amendment.
So, Lot two is the only one really with any wiggle room at this point, because Lot one's done?
Unless Lot four came in and requested additional.
Yeah, but under zoning...
I don't think they have enough floor, enough lot size to accommodate more floor area. Yeah, I was wondering about that, same question.
Okay, that's all for now, thanks.
Steve? Tammy, the, it indicates that the lot is developed with a single family residence of sixty-five hundred square feet. The 1994 approval said that there would be a category one affordable housing unit on each of the free market lots, and that that would be included in the sixty-five hundred feet. Nowhere have I been able to see if part of what is built there is actually an affordable housing unit. Is there or is there not an affordable housing unit on Lot two?
Yeah, correct, correct.
There's no affordable.
No.
Yeah. That requirement was removed at some point before we were involved with it, in the prior owner.
To the entire subdivision.
Yeah.
What, do you know the date when that, because there've been, this has a long history of so many different changes, and I didn't find that in the...
I could take through and find it for you if need.
Okay.
Don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah, my biggest concerns, and I know Glenn's going to get to it, so I'll let Glenn get to it, are really the addressing the issues of the HOA, of the affordable housing next door. They had some really good points brought up in their letter, and I want to make sure that they're adequately addressed. So, I'll leave that to Glenn, and I think that, for me, is still really the most outstanding issue.
Yeah. Yeah. And I apologize if it didn't all get into the packet with the new packet dates.
That's okay, that's okay. You're here now, we've got it now, so. And I also agree with George's thing about monitoring being brought in with the solar use to see if we're really addressing the energy use. Because we're looking at that everywhere now, and this is a good time to be looking at it everywhere again.
One of the questions is, it sounds like we're mitigating for the energy use of the new addition, but not for anything else on the property. Is that correct?
We'll address that in detail when we go through the presentation.
Okay. I know you have a lot of other concerns, so you'll be addressing the letter we received from the HOA next. Is that where we're going?
Yes.
Okay, great. And everyone, you'll have a chance to speak. It's a public hearing. We're going to let Glenn finish presenting, and then we'll open it up.
You have to get rid of this stuff over here.
Um, push the arrow right there.
Which one?
The little arrow. Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. My name's Glenn Horn. I represent AWL West LLC, the owner of the existing house located at 61 Stillwater Lane. The applicant's seeking, Tammy addressed most of this stuff, a major amendment to a development permit, activity envelope and site plan review. The site's in the AR2 Zone. It may be developed with 7,526 square feet of floor area under zoning. The developers, Fritz and Fobby Benedict, restricted lots one, two, three, and four to sixty-five hundred square feet in size to, in order to alleviate concerns about the visual impacts of site development from Highway 82. The covenants have been amended just yesterday to remove the sixty-five hundred square foot floor area limitation on Lot two. The covenant amendment was made by the homeowners, and we have copies of the documents that were signed yesterday, and the restriction on Lot two has been changed to the limitation under zoning. The applicant is proposing to acquire one TDR, and they're only going to use 1,100 square feet of the floor area associated with that TDR, and 1,400 square feet of floor area will be retired and not developed anywhere. We're going to demonstrate in the presentation what Tammy addressed in terms of the visual impacts associated with the development from Highway 82 and from the adjoining property on the Up Valley side, the Stillwater condominiums. The energy demands of the existing house can be reduced significantly if the land use application is approved. We have determined there can be approximately a 20% reduction in the energy demand associated with the existing house if the addition is approved. There are no direct or indirect wildlife impacts associated with the development. The applicant's committed to developing a comprehensive construction management plan to address the short-term impacts associated with onsite construction. Concerns have been expressed by the neighbors, and the applicant has tried to address those concerns that were raised in their letter, which we received last week. The owner of the property really has been very responsible in trying to address all the concerns that came up, so that he can be a good neighbor, and we'll explain what's been done. With me today is Dave Reibek. Dave's a local architect who's going to serve to assist the out-of-town architects with this project, so he brings the local perspective. The house was designed by Poss and Associates when Dave worked there, so he's familiar with the original plans for the development of that house. And I should mention that the guy who owned this house prior to the current owner is someone named Frederick Horn, and he was a single guy.
Not related.
No relation, yeah. And this house was designed for someone who didn't have a family. And the owners that we're working for now is a family of six with four kids. So, part of this is making changes to the house to accommodate the needs of the current owners. So, let's take a look at this vicinity map. Here's Lot two, the subject site. And then, you've got Lot one, which is the Stillwater condominiums. To the north is Highway 82. This is Knollwood. And if you reduce this down, you can see this is the North Star Nature Preserve on the Up Valley side. It's about a half mile from the North Star Nature Preserve to the subject site. This is the limits of the urban growth boundary at North Star. And if you look to see what's in the site vicinity, let's see, can you move this over? Yeah, here we go. You've got lots three and four, Tom Reagan, Chuck Belloc. Here's the open space parcel, the Stillwater subdivision. This pond here is the old gravel pit that was on the property. Here, you've got Lot five, the house that was built. This lot was dedicated to Andre Jager for the kids' cancer facility. Looking in this direction, Up Valley. These two lots here are part of the Stillwater parcels lot split, so those are two larger parcels. This area right in here is the Sparovick subdivision, and then, this is the Preserve subdivision. On the other side of the road, you've got Knollwood. Directly across from this lot are those three little houses that we worked on forever. You can recall, they were the last block in Knollwood, and it took years to figure this out, and I worked on that. They sit down low from the highway when you go by. There's a house that's under construction right here, which is right next to Stillwater Drive. And then, here is the Mountain Valley subdivision. So, that kind of gives you a bit of an overview. This slide looks at what's going on in the immediate site vicinity. Here, you have Highway 82 and Stillwater Drive. This is the bridge over the Roaring Fork. There has been concerns raised over the bridge that we'll address. And then, you've got Stillwater condominiums here. You can see on this aerial, the landscaping that's between Stillwater and the subject site. Here's the pond. There's also quite a bit of landscaping, oops. Quite a bit of landscaping in this area here that screens the house from Highway two. This is the backyard that was improved by the current owner several years ago. When you come in, you go onto Stillwater Drive, then you turn on Stillwater Lane. This is Fobby's Loop, which is an internal driveway that serves the Stillwater condominiums. And you'll see in a minute, this Fobby's Loop is actually built, this section of it, on an easement on Lot two. And then, if you go in this direction, this is Tom Reagan's house on Lot three, and Lot four is below that. I'm going to begin by reviewing some of the background pertaining to the site, focusing on the history of the land use approvals, and then describe the proposal. I'm going to let Dave talk about the energy conservation plan, and we really did our best to finish that plan up, and it didn't get done in time for your packet, but it was done by the consultants over in Crested Butte REG, and we're really happy with the results of the solar plan and the work that Dave can explain to you. I want to address the concerns which have come up during the land use process with a focus on the issues that were raised by the neighbors. So, with that as a background, I want to back up and talk to you about what was going on in 1992, 1993, and 1994, when this project first went through the land use process. At that time, Pickens County didn't regulate floor area and growth management. It was just the number of dwelling units. And in 1992, three, and four, the county was in the process of adopting the 1994 Land Use Code, and there were big changes in the midst, in that the quota in the Aspen area at that time, and they called it the metro area, not the urban growth boundary at the time, was 24 units per year. So, the competition in 1993 and 1994 was pretty significant, because property owners knew that there was going to be a big change in the quota from 24 units per year to just two units per year. So, there's a drastic change coming. And Fritz and Fobby were competing against the Moore Family Partnership, which is now the Five Trees PUD. And it was a heated competition, and it was very difficult for Fritz and Fobby to compete with a property such as the one that Tommy Moore had, in that there were so many amenities offered as part of that project. He had the Aspen Valley Ski Club site, there was a ski lift. They completely rebuilt the school circulation system. It was, it just wasn't something that Fritz and Fobby could compete with. So, they lost the competition to the Moore Family PUD, and they knew that things were really changing, because the quota was going to go to just two units per year. So, it was unprecedented, but they changed their application and went to the board and said, will you grant us excess allotments for this Stillwater development? And that had never been done before, to my knowledge, where excess allotments were granted by the board. But I think the board was sympathetic to the situation that Fritz and Fobby were in. in, and they also made some very significant amendments to the application to convince the board, um, to grant those excess allotments. They went ahead and, uh, said they would dedicate Lot 1 to Picken County, uh, for an affordable housing project. They would gift Lot 5 to Andre Jaeger's group for the cancer, uh, facility. And they would also, um, dedicate this trail that comes across the bridge. It's the East of Aspen Trail, then goes in this direction up, um, across North Star that's heavily utilized and was very desirable. Additionally, they made a commitment to limit the floor area because of the visual concerns associated with development from Highway 82 on lots, um, 2 through 4, uh, to 6,500 square feet. So when the county staff, um, reviewed the, uh, proposal for the subdivision, they were still very concerned about the visual impacts of development on lots 1, 2, 3, and 4. And I don't know whether the, the staff was way off base or whether the vegetation's grown up a lot over time, but, uh, it really isn't a factor, but the staff felt strongly about it, and they said in their memo, "Despite its proposed use for affordable housing, the staff opinion is that the floor area of Lot 1 should also be limited to 6,500 square feet." The board accepted this recommendation, and they passed a resolution awarding Benedict the Stillwater subdivision and imposed, um, a 6,500 square foot limitation on all four lots, 1 through 4. And, um, I don't know, I think it's good to take a look at some of these photos to see wha- what these visual impacts actually are. This is a photo that I took from Highway 82. Uh, this was just last week. You can see there's a house being constructed here that's right at the corner of, um, Stillwater Let's see, I'll show you where these photos came from. Took this first photo right here, oh, across where this house is being constructed, and it was a photo of this area where, uh, the development is on Lot 2. And you can see, it's pretty dense vegetation, you really can't see the condominiums at all. Here's a photo taken with Aspen Mountain in the background. This is just a little bit up-valley of that last photo. Here's the house under construction. You can see these big cottonwoods, um, screen out the development on Lot 1, which is great. You know, people don't even know, uh, that there are 13 condominium units there.
Glenn, where is Lot 1? Could you do the pointer where, where the condominiums, on that, on that photograph?
Okay, so...
Straight behind. Isn't that freezing in there, John? Freezing behind us?
Okay, so here's Lot 1, right here. Keeping my Fobby's Loop is actually developed on Lot 2, but this is Lot 1, right there. Do you want to see it with the boundaries? I can go to this one.
So then, then the photograph from the Highway 82 of the new house that's being constructed. My question is, is the hu- the house that's being constructed also blocked the view of any buildings beyond, or?
Well, the house was there, you know, before. This is a demolition reconstruction.
Okay.
So, uh, I think the house did block some of the views, and the new house will. Uh, and an interesting thing is, um, when Lot 1 was developed, during, later on in the process, the board recognized, I think, what was going on with the, the visual impacts. Maybe there was a reevaluation, but they lifted the 6,500 square foot floor area limitation on Lot 1, and 17,000 square feet of floor area was built on Lot 1, and they accommodate, you know, 13 condominiums. It's just a great, uh, affordable housing project in that it's private, it's, it's close to town, it's well-screened. So if you take a look, um, at this next photo, these are these three little houses in, um, Knollwood Block D that, that I worked on for a long time. Here's Aspen Mountain in the background, and if you look across here carefully, you can just make out a little bit of, of the house there. It's hard to see, but you can make out a portion. Maybe it's right there. So if you take a look at this next photo, I took this one in the wintertime from about the same spot. And there you see, there is that house.
That's the one on Lot 2?
On Lot 2, yeah, the subject site. And, you know, you've got all these evergreens, which really helps a lot. Uh, so then here's another shot I took a little bit further down-valley. This is closer to town. You can see those little houses, uh, on, uh, Block D, lots 1 through 4, and, uh, you know, with the vegetation, you just can't see through to this area where the house is. So, um, and another amendment was made in 2009 to the Stillwater subdivision approvals, and this was for Lot 4. I've alluded to this before. The floor area limitation on Lot 4 was, uh, was lifted from, and rather than it being 6,500, the owner was permitted to build 7,600 square feet of floor area on Lot 4. I think the visual was a major consideration in that process, as was the applicant's agreement to limit, um, the subgrade space to the 1,900, to 1,900 square feet. So there wasn't going to be a 4,000 square foot basement there, but that was a, a consideration for the board in making that approval. In Lot 2, there was a change back in, um, from the original plat. This is the original plat, and I've told you about this easement. This is the plat that the board approved, uh, way back in the 90s, and you can see there's a 30-foot access easement right here to serve Lot 1. Notice the size of the building envelope here on Lot 1 on the original plan compared to, you know, what I showed you previously in terms of the aerial photo. So in 2002, this was changed. Uh, the owner of Lot 2 was Fred Horn, and they went ahead and made this change where, uh, the easement was split, and for good reason, where 15 feet of this easement was for access and utilities, but the other 15 feet was for landscaping, so there'd be screening between the two, uh, projects. So that was a pretty significant amendment, and it led to a pretty good existing situation, which I can show you. The owner of the property now, AWL, uh, came in and got this plan approved in 2010. And you can see, if you blow this up, there's Fobby's Loop in the access easement. And then below that, there's all this landscaping, uh, that the current owner, uh, planted and installed so that there would be screening between his house, uh, and, um, the condominiums for the mutual benefit of both, uh, the owners of Lot 2 and also the people that lived in Lot 1. And this worked out pretty well, in that if you take a look at these photos, this is taken from the condominiums. This is Fobby's Loop. You can just make out the house in here. This is the existing landscaping, quite a bit of privacy. Took this photo from, there's Smuggler Mountain in the background. This is on the south end of Fobby's Loop, and you see the vegetation, uh, that's in a, towards Aspen, down-valley direction to the west. Pretty good screening. And then if you look at it here, this is Aspen Mountain in the background, so this is looking south, and the house is behind this, uh, landscape vegetation in that 15-foot landscaped easement that we talked about. So, um, with that, let's talk about the proposal a little bit. Uh, this is the side of the house that faces, uh, the pond, uh, and the open space. This patio right here is the location of where the addition would be. Essentially, this patio would be removed and be replaced with an 1,100 square foot addition. This is what it looks like in plan. Tammy showed you this. Uh, here is where the addition would be. This is the Stillwater condominiums, the easement, the driveway in, and the pond is right down here. So in this area here is where the addition would be, 1,100 square feet. Um, this shows you a section of it, and if you look at this, this is the main floor elevation of the house. So this is sunken down, uh, about, so about a third of this addition will be subgrade. It'll daylight out. This is where that micropile system that, um, Tammy showed you, that the engineer came up with to protect this steep slope. Uh, we have to stay away from the steep slope, and the, the project's designed to avoid it, and we also have to protect the integrity of that slope, which has been done. So, uh, I'll show you the next slide. I, and I'll turn this over to Dave to describe the solar plan and the energy conservation plan.
Uh, Dave Reibek, I'm a local architect working with AWL. We realized that the addition causes a question of additional energy use, so we engaged REG out of Crested Butte to review the current energy use, and they got the last three years of both natural gas and utility, uh, electrical bills, um, and studied that. Glenn will submit a report, uh, that they have provided, um, that looks at the energy consumption of the current home at roughly 96 kilo BTUs per square foot per year, and then analyzed what an additional 1,100 square feet would bring to energy use. That result showed, uh, the addition will utilize approximately 28,000 kilo BTUs a year, and we, um, then analyzed the ability to offset that additional use with placing solar panels on the structure. Fortunately, the main ridges of the existing building run north-south, which then provides east-facing access for the sloped roofs of the existing structure. In our area, placing solar panels on east or southeast-facing roofs is most beneficial because we have fewer clouds in the morning, provides the most amount of, of solar, uh, gain during the day, and provide us the most efficient placement. So is, this drawing shows the white squares, which places solar panels on the majority of the existing east-facing roofs. The proposed addition is a flat-roofed area and would have no solar panels on it, um, but is also sunken, as the previous, um, slide showed. It's, it's down below grade. That solar array can produce 28,000 kilowatts per year, uh, which will offset the total amount. There's actually 52 panels in the array, um, and we feel we've got a balance of new proposed energy use versus the solar array. Taking it a step further, the report goes into looking at the overall use of the residents. Um, it's currently about 20% higher, or 24% higher than a typical, uh, Picken County residence. Um, part of that is because these owners occupy the house about six months a year, heavy use in the winter, heavy use in the summer, um, which may be, uh, for second homes in our area, um, a higher-than-average use, and therefore their energy consumption's a greater, um, is, is larger. So the renovation of the entire structure, which will reorganize the interior of the existing structure, will allow us the opportunity to increase the energy efficiency of these existing structure. It's a 15-year-old building. The boiler plant's 15 years old, it had a lower efficiency rating. Uh, the insulation in the cavity walls is just simple bad insulation, uh, with only an R19 in the wall. So by a renovation of the entire structure, we, we're conservatively approaching actually decreasing the overall energy use of the enlarged building by 20%, with better thermal windows where we are replacing windows, better insulation in cavities, and overall better performing building. The concern raised by some of the, the Stillwater neighbors was potential glare off of the solar panels. Uh, the existing mature landscape that, uh, exists between the, um, Lot 2 residence and the Lot 1 development, um, shows that we have very good screening between the two. Uh, we have this, uh, superimposed photograph with the existing building. This is an existing garage. All of the vegetation that exists along that landscape buffer and the proposed residence, our east-facing, um, roofs are actually below this canopy line or the tree lines, and the, um, homes on Lot 1 sit far enough away that the existing vegetation will screen the solar panels from their view.
Question, Dave? Um, with the trees so close, are the trees going to be shading the solar panels? Are they, are they really going to be efficacious? When was, when's the sun going to hit them?
Well...
How tall are those trees going to get before it's a problem?
As this plan demonstrates, uh, the larger spruce trees are closer to, uh, Fobby's Loop, and I think the only place we have a question of potential solar shading is on these panels on this garage. Uh, but it does get s- direct southern sun, so a part of the day it will get, uh, a solar gain to it, even though it's tucked into that tree. These other arrays are far enough away from that, uh, existing vegetation, what we should not have a shadowing problem.
Not an issue. All right, thanks, Dave. Sure. Uh, so getting back to the proposal, uh, it's important to note that, uh, there's 3,239 square feet of subgrade space, uh, in this house right now, um, and none of the TDR will be used to increase the size of subgrade space. You can go to 4,000 square feet. So there's only going to be about, uh, 1,100 square feet of the TDR that actually gets used. 1,400 will be retired, uh, and a site in the rural and road area is going to be preserved. I want to address some of these comments from the neighbors. Uh, Dave addressed the solar panels. A concern came up. We were concerned about wildfire and standard, uh, defensible space, and that we've got this great screening here, but what we were worried about is, um, what would happen if we had to do defensible space and all of the screening went away. So, uh, I went out there with Jonathan Losky. Jonathan's certified as a wildfire consultant by Picken County, um, and he took a look at that, and Jonathan's here to respond to questions if necessary, but, uh, I don't, I don't want to have him make a presentation unless you want to hear from him. But what we found is there's really good defensible space right now. This was done in 2010, this approval, so all this landscaping had to respect the defensible space standards of the code, uh, and what Jonathan said is, "This could be cleaned up by removing some of the ladder fuels, but it won't affect the screening, um, above four feet, you know, that's, uh, at eye level, and, uh, you'll have this, you, this great screening won't be, um, damaged." However, uh, if you take a look over here where this, the single garage is, the vegetation's really close here, so there needs to be some defensible space created here, but it's fortunate that there are no buildings right in this area here, so that if we remove some vegetation to create the adequate separation needed from, uh, this garage to these trees, um, it's not going to have a negative impact on any, um, house that looks in this direction. So we thought that, that was an important consideration. Concerns were raised, um, about the bridge, uh, and I, I think those are valid concerns because 13 homeowners on Lot 1, and then, uh, three other homeowners in Stillwater subdivision, and then also on the Stillwater Ranch parcel, all, um, take access over this bridge. Um, I'm sure it was built pretty well to handle the, the trucks originally that were accessing over that bridge. It's accommodated the development of all four lots. When the subdivision was first done in the 90s, SGM evaluated that bridge and determined that it was adequate to handle the loads to construct these houses. Later on, when, uh, Picken County, uh, Housing Authority, developed Stillwater condominiums, they looked at the bridge again. This was in 2000, and it was deemed to be adequate. So we retained SGM really just the middle of last week when we got the letter from the homeowners, and, uh, one of their engineers went up there and took measurements of the bridge and tried to evaluate what the capacity was, but the water was just too high and it was too dangerous to get under there and do the type of measurements that are required to determine what the capacity of that, uh, bridge is right now. Uh, and what the engineering report says, which we got just yesterday, is, uh, they can go back in about a month and reevaluate that bridge and, uh, make any changes to, um, the, whatever the traffic, uh, capacity of the bridge... capacity of the bridge is as part of the construction management plan. But what they could tell from their assessment right now is that, given the projected loads that are going to have to go across the bridge, that it should be able to accommodate. We're going to have sixteen dump trucks come out of there for the excavation. The architects calculated the amount of material that has to come out, and there are going to be six concrete trucks that go in to pour the foundation in the walls for the addition. So what SGM is saying is that, and the owners amenable to this, to commit at this time to have half-loads of dump trucks going out rather than full loads. So rather than having sixteen trucks, there would be thirty-two. That ends up, you know, creating more impacts for the neighbors. However, they think it's the conservative thing to do to make sure that there are no, there's no damage done to the bridge. And the applicant would commit to do the same thing for the concrete trucks that are going in, rather than having six trucks, there would be twelve, just to be conservative and make sure that there's no damage to that bridge. However, they can go back in the next month and do a full assessment of the bridge when it's safe to get in the water, and they may find as part of that process that it can accommodate full loads of dump trucks going out and concrete trucks going in. And if that's the case, we would suggest as part of the construction management plan that that be addressed and come up with what the final weight limits are for that bridge and the way it would affect concrete trucks and dump trucks. So with that, another comment I want to make has to do with construction management and the concerns that were raised by the Stillwater condominiums with regard to how do you stage construction are completely valid. What they're concerned about is having these trucks staged on Fobby's Loop, you know, right in front of their place, diesel-ing and creating a bad situation, and we completely understand that. But we do think that can be addressed through the construction management plan in terms of where are these trucks staged? And if the bridge limits are set the way we think they're going to be set, we're hopeful that there are only going to be sixteen trucks going out of there and six trucks coming in, and it's something that can be, that can be addressed in this construction management plan. Now, with regard to the construction management plan, we'll share that with the county staff and also with all of the homeowners in Stillwater, Lot One, Two, Three, and Four. The plan's going to include public notification, limits on the work schedule, fencing, dog prohibition, parking, traffic control, sediment erosion control, fugitive dust control, emissions, and noise. And like I said, we'll share that with the condominium association. They can comment on it to the staff and jointly come up with a construction management plan that works for the neighborhood. So I want to summarize by saying you've got Lot Two in the urban growth boundary. This is an old drawing from the Aspen Area Community Plan, and it talks about rural Picken County and the urban growth boundary, and how it's appropriate for there to be preservation of sites in the rural and remote area and the approval of, at this time it was density, but now we're talking about density increases as well as intensity of development increases inside the urban growth boundary. And it's the adopted policy of the county to accept this kind of trade-off, so that development occurs in the urban growth boundary rather somewhere out in the rural and remote areas. Now, we are totally aware of the direction where this board is going with respect to energy conservation and the concern over climate change, even with development occurring in the urban growth boundary. And the applicant has been responsible in addressing that, and Dave presented the results of that work. So in summary, this is what we've got. Eleven hundred square feet of floor area added in the urban growth boundary. Fourteen hundred square feet of floor area will be extinguished. Rural area parcel will be preserved. We don't believe there'll be any visual impacts associated with this development due to the location of the house. There is no direct or indirect loss of wildlife habitat. The floor area limits that were originally imposed by the board on Lot One of sixty-five hundred square feet, that limitation has been lifted. Seventeen thousand square feet of floor area has been built there. The limitation on Lot Four was removed because it really wasn't visible from the highway, as was the case with Lot One. We're proposing a significant reduction in energy demand for the existing house, even with the addition, should this be approved. And finally, I want to emphasize that the owner of Lot One really wants to be a good neighbor to everyone in the neighborhood. He's really been the model applicant with regard to doing whatever it takes to address the concerns that came up. And I think, you know, he wants to live there for a long time and try to get along with the folks on Lot One as well as on Three and Four. With that, we would ask you to consider this request and approve the application.
Any other questions? I had a question, just I wasn't quite clear on what, how much renovation is being done and upgrading of the power plant and all that for the main house. Sounds like work, insulation work and power plant work's being done there as well. They're trying to bring it up to a higher spec for energy conservation and efficiency. Is that right?
That's correct. The addition is one part of the renovation of the entire structure.
So it's renovation, the whole thing was STM, or not STM, but the guys in Crested Butte?
REG was aware of this, and...
Participating in that.
Their report says, you know, you're taking a 2004 building and upgrading it to 2019, 20 standards. There's potential for a significant increase in both the systems and the thermal cavity or the thermal envelope. At this point, we're in a very rough, we're in an early stage of what the overall renovation will be, and we haven't addressed every wall, every window. So taking it from a big, you know, ten-thousand-foot level, we know we'll be touching the roofs, we know we'll be touching the exterior walls. And when we analyze those walls, if we can bring in foam insulation versus bad insulation, we'll increase the R-value of those walls, same with the roofs. But we have to study that from the existing thermal envelope. It's not the desire of the applicant to replace every window or replace every piece of siding on the house, which will limit our new systems working with the old systems, and we have to marry those two scientifically, you know, from a building practice.
Right. I would certainly encourage, encourage going for, you know, we're talking about trying to raise our, our, our energy efficiency across the board, and this is a great example. Somebody who apparently seems to be open to doing it and dedicated to doing, doing it the right way. So I want to encourage them to go forward and work with our comm dev and help us understand how a house gets renovated with these goals in mind.
And that, that is his approach, and that's how we want to approach it.
Kelly?
I have a related question. So is the solar array designed to maximize the solar opportunity or to offset the, the trading of improvements in the old and then addition of the new?
We are taking up advantage of every southeast-facing plane of the roof. We know that if we were to fill in the array on the western face, that its fishing level is so low due to our afternoon clouds that it's not really a good cost-benefit approach. So we've taken advantage to fill the, those southeast-facing slopes as much as possible. There could be an opportunity for one or two more panels, but not much more with the three-foot setbacks off of eve lines. We've tried to keep this contained. The existing design of the house actually has a slip skirt roof where there's a shallower edge to the roof that allows the last three or four feet of the roof edge to shed the snow, and there are shingles above that that hold the snow. And we're filling the shingled area with the solar panels and not the slip skirt areas.
Thank you.
So, two things that's associated with that before we hear public comment, but so the renovation plan, it's also going to have construction impacts to the neighbors. Do we have a construction management plan for the renovation yet, or has that not come through the process? I want to make sure we're not, construction management plan for the new building and forgetting that we have construction impacts from the renovation. We need to be looking at that whole picture for the neighbors.
The CMP would be put together as a total package, and that's submitted at the building permit application state, so that'll incorporate both the renovation and the addition.
And you did mention shingles on the roof?
We have existing copper shingles.
Okay. Wanted to make sure. We have an issue with shingles in that neighborhood. We went through a long battle with what to put on the roof of the affordable housing units, so, okay. As everyone remembers.
What is the status of the maintenance agreement regarding the bridge? Who are all the players? What are the proportions of responsibility? What county obligation is there, if any?
I think that's all addressed within the improvement agreement, and I haven't, honestly haven't dove into all those details, but...
I don't know about the responsibility, you know, and how it's broken up. Perhaps Mike from the condominium association's more aware of that. You know, we are concerned about any damage to that bridge and the burden that would have on, in particular, the people in the affordable housing units. But I'm sure the owners of Lots Three and Four are going to be concerned as well as Stillwater Ranch. So we have to look at that. I don't know how it's broken out and how they care for the bridge in terms of ongoing maintenance and capital improvements, but we can address that, you know, as a condition of approval or within the construction management plan.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's, yeah, jumping on that, a good point, and also any damage that may occur for, that's actually related to a truck hitting one of the barriers. We want to make sure that that's covered. So I agree that that should be part of the construction management plan, having some special provisions about...
I'd like to understand if, you know, if there's seventeen total owners, is it a one-seventeenth share or the one...
Bigger house, the square footage, or...
Based on lot. That would be helpful information for me.
The applicant has said that, you know, any, obviously any incremental damage to the bridge, it's a result of his work, is his responsibility, and he acknowledges that.
You have special clarification in that, right there.
George? Let me see that. Your hand up.
Dave, I know there's, there's challenges when you are doing a remodel in terms of addressing potential energy offsets. I just wonder if REG or you are also in communication with Core in terms of having them provide some perhaps ideas, whether it be heat pumps versus boiler with a new addition, if a geothermal is a possibility, since you're limited with solar panels. There may be some other ideas in terms of approaching even a net zero, and Core actually has some grants available for homeowners who are, who are trying to get to net zero to help offset some of those costs.
Those are great suggestions, and we can engage in communication with Core. Again, we're so, you know, we weren't progressing to design until we got past this land use limitation.
It's a good idea.
If we get there, we'll definitely look at all resources and how we can bring down the thermal use or the energy use.
Let the, let the owner know that we've, we've just partnered on a net-zero affordable housing project, so it may not be out of reach.
It is achievable.
Just one other quick thing to add to construction management. I want to make sure we address parking, construction-related parking, not just the idling and staging of the trucks, but where are they going to park during the construction phase? You know, there's not a lot of room up in that neighborhood, and generates a lot of cars, so we appreciate it when construction companies do ban carpooling, so we don't have that traffic jam in that neighborhood. Spend a lot of time walking through there during campaigns, know that neighborhood well, and it gets pretty tight, so...
Steve, do you have a concern?
Well, my, my big concern was, in all the things that said, Fritz and Fobby made commitments for various things. And then looking at the history of what has happened, many of those commitments have been totally changed or something else was, was ultimately done. And for instance, on the square footage for each of the houses, and my family made commitments on our conservation easement for, you know, reduced square footage on new houses that would be built on our land. So I'm, and I'm sensitive to when a landowner makes a commitment, whether, you know, what ultimately happens to that commitment. So then when I look at the history and how Lot Four, the commissioners approved increasing the square footage on Lot Four, and I didn't try to decipher all their reasoning behind that, but then also the fact that on Lot One, that was, thought there would be sixty-five hundred square feet on there, and yet it's seventeen thousand square feet in the condominiums. The fact that there was the commitment to do a affordable housing unit on each of the Lots Two, Three, and Four, which weren't done, but then there were more affordable housing units, I think probably put on Lot One than was originally intended, so, you know, in my mind, I'm just trying to sort, sort out what the Benedict's committed to, what actually has happened. And so I'm actually, after listening to your presentation, I'm a lot more amenable to, you know, entertaining the approval of the project than I was coming in. I was skeptical after just looking at the packet, to be honest. I do want to hear what the public comments are at this point.
Okay, if we're, if we're far enough along...
Well, before we go to public comments, we take a short break.
We could do that, that'd be great. Ten minutes? We're going to take a ten-minute break back to, to forty. It's going to be a thirteen-minute break.
Thanks.
I know, I know these things go long. Thank you all. All right, we are back, folks. All right, folks, we're going to get started here. It's, we're back at the Wednesday, July 24 regular meeting of the commissioners, and we're talking about the AWL West LLC, and I want to open it to public comment now. We're in that portion of the presentation. We've got a microphone and a chair over here. If somebody would like to make a comment, come on up, identify yourself.
Is that mic on?
Try to keep it to three or four minutes.
Yes.
And, and identify yourself. You start, we'll go from there.
A little red light?
Yeah, the red light should be on in that mic.
Yep, I think so.
Great, thanks. Thanks for coming.
I'm Adam Mozinski. I've been in town sixteen years. I was fortunate enough to win one of these employee units two years ago. We love it there. I, sorry, I'm a little nervous, I don't do well with public speaking, but obviously...
So are we.
I mean, concerns are myriad. We, I guess, Patty, you said that you're familiar with the area. Obviously, the roads are tight. So, I mean, a few, a few things just to consider as far as the easement goes and where trucks are going to be parking. A lot of those photos of the foliage that's planted between our units and the house, lots of times trucks park right up on the grass there, they're partially in the road. If there are as many trucks as we can all imagine that are going to be working on this project, they will probably be attempting to park there, or obviously they're allowed to park there. We're just concerned about Postman, UPS, garbage truck, FedEx, in addition to all of us being able to get in and out, not to mention children on bikes. I have a four-year-old daughter. We do circles around the loop on the bike. She's learning how to ride a bike. I'm assuming this won't be a very safe place to do that anymore for the time period while the construction is going on. If you've been in the area in the wintertime, it's kind of a dark hole. We get way more snow than the rest of town. We were buried this winter. It is really difficult to plow, and then we are all out shoveling and chipping ice constantly. It's hard enough to get your own vehicle out of there, dealing with construction trucks, maybe taking a wrong turn or trying to park in there is just, I don't even know how that would be possible. So if you take a look also, not to mention the Rafta bus, the dial-a-ride comes through there many times a day, so just as far as people getting to work using the bus, that's a concern. If you take the Walden's house as a consideration, the one, there were photos there that they showed from eighty-two, that's the one that's being built on eighty-two in Stillwater. There are at least a dozen... There are at least a dozen vehicles parked there every day. This project seems like it's going to be at least of similar size. I guess we would just really like, if this is approved, for all those trucks to be staged on their side of the fence. Their, you know, the gated area, there's an electrical gate that enters you into Lot two, three, and four. If they could all stage there, that would keep traffic moving smoothly, that would be ideal. I have no idea if that's possible. But that's, you know, access in and out, danger to kids, the amount of trucks that are going to be going in and out of there, that's a concern for all of us. The solar panels, uh, those images show that the solar panels are basically going to cover every inch of the south and east-facing roofs, which are the roofs that face us. The foliage, the photos, you know, all the photos are summer foliage, so hard to say what that all will look like in the wintertime, and light does penetrate through plants. So, if all of a sudden, there's bright solar panels bouncing the sun towards our units, that's something we will be dealing with daily. If you turn onto Stillwater Lane, I guess it is, instead of going into Fobby Loop and you go straight towards this property, you can see the building. You can, so, none of us are concerned about seeing the building. However, as I said, if that entire roof is covered in solar panels, it will be obviously glaring, and, you know, there's just no way that that light will be blocked. So, the solar is going to be bouncing towards our units. You know, we commend them for trying to use lots of solar, we're just concerned at the angle that those will be at. And actually, there were notes that they had that they're going to be trimming those trees, and is that, does that create less coverage? Does that, does the height have to come down? They're cutting from the bottom up as well, just, you know, just trying to get a better idea of how those solar panels are going to affect us, because they are pointing directly at our units. I understand that that's east-facing, and that's best for solar panels, but just something to consider. And I think that's all I have.
Thanks.
Adam, thanks for coming in.
Good job.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, public comments still open? Do we have someone else like to come up?
Coming.
Yep, I'm Michelle Hulman. My unit is directly next to their house, my bedroom. So, I'm at 102, I'm at the end of the loop where our trash is, in the end unit facing Shadow Mountain. So, for thirteen years that I've lived there, I have listened to the gate opening and closing, or as long, it has not been there that long, but pretty close. They put it up, so it was controlled, so no one would go down to their properties to Lot Three, Two, Three, and Four. The trees were, are three-deep, pretty much, two to three-deep. I no longer have any view from my bedroom, I used to. They've grown, so now I can't see Aspen Mountain anymore or the fireworks, but that's not a big deal.
We don't have fireworks anymore.
No, that's true, we don't have fireworks anymore. Anyway, um, so, my biggest concern, once again, would be parking noise. I have a dog, we have kids, very small child, Adam's little girl. My kid is obviously bigger now, but it's just, it's a little invasive, the process. I'm not worried about the square footage they're adding either. But totally would be, my preference would be to have everything parked on that side of the gate, not using the easement, because it's very narrow. The snow was twenty feet at that easement this last winter. It's the only place to put it from portions of our property, and we're all over the place with the snow. But that was a particular space that it is put every year. So, on the easement closest to, on Building D's side, it's the only place to put the snow. And as you come out, our road on Stillwater, we have sprinklers all the way around, and those are, and it's kind of an open area, and people do park there, and they shouldn't. If I park there, I immediately am told to move. But yet, construction, other, you know, caretaking, property managers park there, and they break our sprinklers on a regular basis, and we pay for it to be replaced. So, it's just a bit of a concern for small things, it seems like, but those add up and cost to us. And of course, the bridge would be prohibitive for our HOA to ever afford to replace. So, there's only thirteen units of us. We're all working folks, so, that's, those are my concerns.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
See, I've done this before. Not this, but it's recording. My name's Mike Lavker. I am the president of the Stillwater Ranch Employee Condos, and I have the unenviable task of representing the thirteen units, the twenty-two working adults, the kids, and the pets, all in this neighborhood who live here. To address some of the few things that we were talking about before, Steve mentioned about the housing and what Fabby and Fritz Benedict originally planned on, and based on the packet and the things that I've read in there, you know, the home sizes that they originally asked for were ninety-six hundred square feet, eighty-three hundred square feet, and seventy-three hundred square feet. That seems to be now thrown out the window, and where it has been, it was, first it was set to sixty-five hun, then it was set to sixty-five hundred square feet, but lately, it seems that we are now approving something to go back to seventy-five hundred square feet. There's another, I don't know the other square footage of the other homes, but we're basically have said, forget that. I understand that we got a employee housing unit that we all live in that is fantastic, and that's not what the one thousand is, but you also housed thirteen families and working families. So, there's a difference in the trade-off, I believe, in the home sizes there versus the employee unit piece we have. We, as an HOA, understand the importance of TDR program and why it's important to land some of these, keep the rural and remote area pristine. We, I just don't understand if it's, we don't think it's such a good idea to land one so close to the North Star Nature Preserve and really the greater North Star ecosystem, and the fact that there are moose that are coming through, we have videos of the moose rolling through, we have bears, we have wild turkey, a mountain lion has even been spotted, all these other concerns, in a time when it seems to me as if the Board of County Commissioners are looking to even reduce the seventy... Fifty-seven, whatever, was it seventy-two, eighty, or whatever? Fifty-seven, five, we seem like landing a TDR seems to be going, you know, is a little bit contradictory to that. All those things being said, I guess I could lose a little bit of clarity based upon what Glenn was saying regarding the landing of future TDRs, and if this is, I kind of heard no, but is that a concrete fact? I would like, we would like to know if that's true. Can this is, is this going to be the pattern for future development? So, basically, just to sum up a lot of what everyone else has said, our concerns are a lot of the staging of construction, as you can hear. There are, not to mention just the dump trucks and everything, but there's, when you're doing a, any kind of addition, there's going to be stonework, there's going to be woodwork, and there's going to be cabinetry, and all those individuals do not come in the carpool, they all come in the single truck, and there's up to twenty of them oftentimes working on a site. We would love a condition of approval that all of this activity does not even, if Glenn could pull up a picture, that'd be great, but doesn't happen on Stillwater Road or Fobby Loop, and everything is staged over there on the other side of their, their fence. I don't think it's, uh, it'll be, I think, a little bit more impactful to lots, to the homeowners on lots three and four, but the bus goes through there, like Adam was alluding to, and that raft of bus goes twice an hour, on the zero and the thirty. And the project at the top of the hill, we went through the construction management plan with them, and they said that they would not use that area to stage, but excavation services and a giant dump truck, they use it anyway. They've been pretty good, but, and we've been able to a little bit of go around them, but it'll be a whole different story if they're staging right on Stillwater Lane there on the way into Lot Two. Not just this construction, but we're dealing with the paddleboards in the summer, we're dealing with hikers also parking in the, we have probably twenty spots, maybe, and everyone has like two cars for thirteen people, we have like probably fifteen spots, I don't know exactly, but everyone's parking there, it's been a problem. I'm concerned that we're trying to address all this stuff in the construction management plan. I would love this, this part of it to be part of conditions of approval, if you chose to go that way. HVAC noise has been, there's three, there's currently two air conditioning units that are right on the other side of where they're going to put the addition. I'm sure there's going to be another one added to make sure that this one is, you know, cooled and properly heated and vented, and the noise that is being emitted from these can, is there any way that we can mitigate that? Can we, you know, that part of construction? The hours of construction, as full-time residents who are constantly working, we would like to ask the BACC to consider modifying these hours, if possible. So, the project is maybe Monday through Friday, we understand that it may take longer to do that, and if the hours were from eight to five, so that we can continue their, like, you know, the quiet enjoyment and the quality of life that lives out there. Everyone there is working, there's no one there just kind of sitting there retired like you, like you here. The bridge, you know, they've, Glenn has addressed that the applicant is going, has tried to do a survey and a site analysis, and we would like to have that already confirmed. We would like the applicant to do a study before and after to make sure that he hasn't impacted this. How are we going to know, you know, if he says, yeah, the bridge is just fine, it looks fine? You know, we're very, very concerned about how the assurances that are being represented here are actually kept and made. Just, I don't understand, it could be a little bit of my naivete on how the whole process works, but because they say it here, how does that actually happen? When it comes to the solar panels, I heard today that they're going to trim some of the trees, how is that going to affect with the reflection? I mean, I don't know how, what kind of study has been done to know exactly the kind of reflection that happens off the sun hitting these panels, what happens if it doesn't? And all of a sudden, these, these homes are just blasted with sun. I mean, my house from the regular sun in the sky is eighty degrees at night because it's looking due west. What we think would be greatest for us is, well, actually, one thing I also want to put on the record is that nothing of this has to do with the virtualizers being bad neighbors. They're great neighbors, the applicants, that's the applicant. The Belles on Lot Three or Four, whatever it is, they're excellent neighbors, and so are the Reagans. We've heard representations that says they're going to be here and want to live here a long time. That sounds great, but if we all read the paper, things don't happen exactly the way they want. The Aspen Club isn't built, the Lift One A is in peril. So, the best-laid plans, you know, the rest often go awry. So, what we would like to do really is think is if the board would entertain the ability to continue this, so that we can get assurances, and, because some of these conditions can be written into the approval, so that everyone feels more comfortable. I think that if, the applicant, as well as their, as well as Glenn, has reached out to me, and he's, has offered to, you know, wants to be neighborly, and has said all these assurances, I think if we had a chance to sit down and put some of these into writing, into the actual resolution, that I think as a neighborhood, as a neighborhood, we'd be happier, I think, as a, as a Board of County Commissioners. I think it'd be easier for you to make a decision, instead of having to say, well, it's kind of just a one, you know, this is a one-time approval, versus giving it some, a little bit more time to maybe work some of these details out, get studies, then I think everyone would be able to be, have a nice, easy decision, and we can go through. Other than that, I believe, you know, I think that's pretty much all our, as far as the, one more thing on the bridge, you know, it's any kind of repair on there, I think we may have, the question was asked, how much do we own, like Kelly asked us that? It's somewhere between one-tenth and one-fourteenth, but if a bridge is $200,000, one-tenth and one-fourteenth crush, we have, we're thirteen units, and in order to even just keep any kind of reserves is very expensive. We've got grass, which we love, but we have to maintain it. We've got a road, we have to plow it. So, we are responsible for all, and we have not asked for anything from APSHA or any of the counties to try to help us offset that, but should something like this go wrong with the bridge, even if something as simple as repaving is catastrophic. So, putting some of these conditions of, into the, as part of the approval, I think would go a long way to making my thirteen homeowners and twenty-two people, kids and pets and the moose feel a bit better. I think I've said enough, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, thanks for coming in and representing. You've got a, you've got a good guy.
Can you say that again for the, for the...
Got a good guy, why not?
Thanks.
Can I say one more, Glenn?
Come on up, we've got a couple minutes.
Super quick.
How many more people want to speak is the question?
I think that's it, yeah. Just addressing the environmental impact, I know that it said that animals and environment will have no impact. We, because of the, how crowded North Star Preserve is now with people paddleboarding, those animals that usually are there hanging out are now actually in our neighborhood. So, there's no way that if you did a study, that you wouldn't see that the moose are in our driveway, deer are in our driveway, there's a mountain lion that's been spotted on the camera of these houses. So, to say that the environmental impact is not going to be there is, couldn't be more inaccurate, that we see those animals every day, so. And they're already being pressured downstream from the preserve by all the people on their paddleboards, which is obviously getting more crowded, as we have people going over the spillway in our backyard, coming up, asking for help. Shelley was there.
Ah, Shelley told me about it.
Teenagers had their bathing suits ripped off, because they didn't know that there's rapids, I mean, it's crowded, and the animals are being scared. So, this will have a bit more of an impact on the environment than the study shows.
Thanks for coming in.
Sure.
Okay, let's see if we're going to close public comment. We're going to close public comment now and bring it back. George?
Well, I'd like to have the applicant respond to some of the concerns. Construction planning, parking, staging, that seems to risen to the top in terms of the impact to the neighbors. How can we address that? We could probably address that in the reso, but I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Well, I don't think there can be any construction staging on Fobby's Loop here. I mean, that's for starters. And in terms of staging in this area here on Stillwater Lane, it's not much different than Fobby's Loop. I mean, it makes the loop, and this is a one-way street. So, if you, if, if these residents are coming out and there are guys staging here, it's not working. So, we have to look at state, first off, we have to look at carpooling and off-site parking for the subcontractors. And in terms of if a truck needs to stage, perhaps it's going to have to take place on this side rather than on, the gate's right about, right there, yeah.
The little black lines, the gate.
So, we can't have trucks, you know, these dump trucks that are waiting... So we can't have trucks, you know, these dump trucks that are waiting to get filled up, stage, uh, here. And I don't know, you know, based upon dealing with the owners of Lot Three and Four, whether we can stage here. They may have to stage off-site and be called in, um, so that they can get right into the driveway here. And it's, it's a little more detailed for what we can figure out right now, but I think what we can commit to is that there'll be no staging on Fobby's Loop or Stillwater Lane. You know, Stillwater Lane's part of the loop, is the way I see it. And, you know, I think that type of condition, um, at the resolution, resolution stage can guide what goes into the construction management plan.
And, um, snow removal?
Snow removal, uh, are you referring to snow removal on Lot, uh, Lot Two, or?
Well, on Lot, or, for access for, for vehicles are getting in and out, uh, for the construction site? I mean, is there gonna be any additional snow removal that's gonna be needed, or just what is currently used?
I, I think it's just the, the snow removal, uh, for, for the driveway, and I don't know whether it's carted out of there, or how much snow stacking ability is there, Dave? Do you know?
I'm not familiar with our sto-, uh, snow, um, maintenance plan right now. Uh, the original home was designed to, to hold the snow on the roof, so my anticipation during the winter and during the construction months, the snow removal would be just limited to the physical site of the addition and the driveway. And it would be a normal condition of just hauling it off of maybe.
Can I jump in on that? I thought the concern was the snow removal if they were using Fobby Loop, because that's usually where they do. So I think the snow removal for the, for Lot Two should be kept on the site, and snow removal for Lot One, as it has been, is kept on the site. I think that's pretty clear. They were just afraid, I think, that they were gonna be using some of the portions of that easement on Fobby Loop that, where they put their snow now. So if we're not using that for the construction, I don't think that's an issue. We're gonna keep all the construction-generated traffic and parking out of Lot One.
I think we have to look at Fobby's Loop as the driveway to thirteen homes, you know, and, you know, it's just, you can't, you can't use it.
And we're gonna leave that for them to keep their internal snow removal free for them to, to utilize that. It's not gonna be impacted.
On, on the, regarding the bridge, do we have the ability, um, if we're concerned about any damage to the bridge in terms of doing a bonding or anything like that?
Yes.
Okay, so how would that happen?
Um, typically, it's done.
Typically, it would be done through the resolution of approval, but it can also defer out to the construction management plan. A bond is required to be posted, and, uh, the attorney's office reviews it, and the amount is determined typically through the engineer's office, um, to, to, sufficient to cover any damage. The concern would be not protecting Lot One, but to ensure that the homeowners association as a whole is not burdened with, um, you know, any expense from activity on only one singular lot. So you have a bond posted for the duration of the project, and if there is damage, uh, then the homeowner for, or the property owner for Lot Two is required to repair it, and if they don't, then the bond is, is negotiated, and the money is used to repair the road or the bridge.
We should write that in. We hit around to.
Yeah, and that also would include, um, uh, road impact fees?
Road impact fees are different. Road impact fees are assessed to defray capital costs that the county incurs for county roads. Um, Still, uh, Stillwater Drive is not a county road, so, uh, it, it, it simply is, goes into a county road, um, uh, account, um, that is reflective of the impact fee.
But we can include that bond to ensure not only, uh, any damage to the bridge, but also to the roads in, in the subdivision based on heavy, heavy equipment, heavy trucks, loads?
Right.
We can, okay.
I mean, I, it, you're, you're talking about a limited use of the roads within the subdivision. I mean, there's, they can't go around to the, uh, to the left, in other words, and loop the subdivision to avoid the, um, the Lot One impacts entirely. They just have to drive past Lot One and, um, stage and park and deal with all the other construction-related impacts, either, um, Stillwater Lane running down from Lot Two or on Lot Two itself.
Three blocks from eighty-two, around the corner.
Yeah.
I, so I think we could add, and add, address some of those concerns for the residents. I, you know, my, my, my other comments are, uh, for the residents, this isn't, this isn't a U G B. Uh, you're not out in, in unincorporated Picken County. And so, um, there are expectations, uh, whether one likes it or not, that, that new, new homes may be built, that may be obstructing one's views, um, but, but that's sort of a reality in terms of living in a city. Um, you know, in terms of animal migration, uh, we're the problem, all of us. I, I'm, I'm guessing that some of you or your friends use, uh, North Star Preserve for recreation. I'm sure you know someone who does. If you don't, you haven't got many friends. Um, so it doesn't matter whether you're, uh, whether you're in Stillwater or down in Redstone. Uh, as we recreate more, we are pushing animals around, and that's just the reality. All of our codes are leaning towards, uh, incentivizing, encouraging, perhaps, uh, requiring homes to become more net zero. We need to get off fossil fuels. Uh, we know climate change is here. Uh, it's all of our problems. We all have to understand that and, uh, and have to, um, deal with it. And going to renewables is the way we'll have to do that. I think that there are ways that we can look at solar panels, if they're gonna be adjustable, uh, the new technology, you know, adjustable, um, uh, the way angles tilt, that they could be tilted, uh, to try to deflect glares. There's probably some new technology with, uh, low glare panels as well. I mean, we've, we've addressed the solar issue several years ago based on that issue of glare, and I think we've come up with some good solutions. So I, I think the, the, the key points for me that I think are, are critical for, uh, the residents and neighbors are, is the construction management plan, the parking, uh, dealing with the safety. The hours, I, I don't, I don't know what the, what the current code is for hours. What is that, Tammy?
I believe it's seven to seven, um, and no Sundays or holidays.
So it's.
Is it seven to seven on Saturdays also?
Yes.
Cindy's right. Is it?
I think it is.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would consider, um, looking at adapting that a little bit. Um, it's hard to do something from, uh, eight to five, uh, to try to get any work done unless the residents want to see this project go on two or three times longer. So there, there's gotta be some sort of give and take on that. Um, you know, I would, I would, I would think about maybe limiting it to Monday to Friday, so you have the weekends off for families. Um, so there's, there's some possibilities there in terms of adjusting the hours.
Patty?
Yeah, I agree. Um, if we can, I know that there's some increased cost when you drag the project out longer, but I think it'd be great. Um, I know when we had a lengthy discussion about Saturday hours and inside versus outside construction, even on Sundays. I live in a tight neighborhood myself, and when people are doing construction on Saturdays, you know, even, it's, it's nice to have that break, a Saturday, Sunday break. Like, that's important for your quality of life and your health. Um, so I would agree with that. Solar panels, I do know they have anti-glare panels. We've talked about it at length, and that's required in this for the panels. As far as the tree trimming for wildfire, um, from the ground up, the, the ladder fuels, um, is there anything maybe that could be planted underneath that, that, um, it's more fire-resistant, that could block that? Cause then you're just gonna have this ridge, and you're gonna, it's like, you know, seeing a girl with a short skirt, you're gonna see those legs coming through, and you're gonna see the other side. So, um.
What was that?
You know what I meant?
I'm trying to imagine it.
You know? So maybe there's something we can do to mitigate that. Um, not all girls should wear short skirts. So, um, so, so you can, so you can block that, because you don't, we don't want them to be saying, oh, I have to stand up here this high so I don't see it, because not all people are, you know, it's gonna create a view plane through that. Um, and as far as having to remove the trees because of the solar issues by the signal of the garage area, um, there's probably some vegetation that can be planted in there that's not tree and that's more fire resistant. So I think we can look at some re-veg issues there to try and maintain that great, um, you know, that great barrier that's been created already along Fobby Loop there. Um, the other one I had, um, I didn't know that the dialer ride came through there twice, twice an hour. That's nice. I thought it used to just park outside, so that's a great convenience. So we need to make sure that we keep all the access areas open for fire, for responders, and, um, for the dialer ride, because that can be. So just wanna make sure that we can prevent those. As far as continuing this, I think if we address them now in the resolution, and I would really like the homeowners association to be able to review a drafted construction management plan, um, before it's finalized, so they have a say. And I think that the applicant and, and their, their team here is gonna do the best they can to resolve the issues of the HOA. I think they're sensitive to that. I don't blame the HOA for saying, yeah, but it's being said here in this room. What's said here in this room is on the public record, regardless of whether or not it's in the resolution, so please be, be aware of that. So, um, and again, this is taking development off the backside, and the fact that the applicant is not utilizing, finding a way to use all of that square footage. We've been talking about doing fractional TDRs just because of this issue, so you're a good example of, you don't have to use it all, and you can, you can retire that additional square footage, and I think this is a great example of that. Um, and who knows, these kids, the kids, the, the four kids in this neighborhood will be out there playing with your kids, and it'll be, it'll be a great, a great neighborhood up there, as it is already. It'll just be even better.
Steve?
Yeah, thank you. Um, in terms of the solar panels, I have a couple of thoughts. One is there are solar panels being made that do, do not glare. If it's a different type of construction, I don't know what the materials are made from, but I think if there are solar panels anywhere in the subdivision, they should be required to be, you know, the latest technology with the least or no glare to them, whatever the best available technology would be. In terms of the location of the solar panels, I am wondering if there is the opportunity somewhere in the, the whole subdivision for a location for, like, a solar garden that would be jointly owned by lots one, two, three, and four could all benefit from it potentially, and it would be in a different location than right on Lot Two, probably. Maybe there's an area, I, I mean, I'm not familiar with the subdivision, um, but I think that should be looked into as a, as another alternative to putting all the solar panels on the roofs of, of the house at Lot Two. And it could be a benefit for all of the homeowners in the subdivision. Uh, it could be a much more efficient, um, use of the solar panels that would have better exposure to the sun, more hours of the day, and, um, could be a more efficient system, perhaps. Um, when I look at a whole row of spruce trees, they could all be dead in a year's time if spruce beetle comes in. Uh, trees die, whether they're aspen trees, spruce trees. I think we should have a condition that, um, and maybe, maybe there is a condition in there already, but that the owners of Lot Two would be responsible for maintaining live trees in that, that row. Um, anytime there's a monoculture, like a whole row of spruce trees, I'm, I'm really concerned about that, cause they could all die so quickly. Uh, and perhaps a, a different kind of a mix with different kinds of trees might, might be in order for, you know, when replacement is necessary. Uh, in terms of the bridge, I'm wondering if there's any way that the bridge could be beefed up for the construction. I'm sure there must be some, um, low-cost kind of a thing, like big steel plates or something that construction companies have used to just lay over the whole bridge to, that would distribute the load when a heavy truck is going over, or, or something, maybe putting extra posts underneath just to beef up the underneath part temporarily. Um, I think that should be looked at as, you know, a possibility. There might be a cost-effective way to protect the bridge so that there'd be less, less concern about damage to it. Also, if, um, one time at county meetings, there was a company that does, that showed their product, uh, they do a single-span concrete bridge that can be just slapped into place. They had to do that in Monizuma, Colorado, when a flood took out, took out their bridge, and they put one in really quickly, I think, and very cost-effectively. So if for any reason the bridge had to be replaced, I think there are probably less expensive alternatives that are very strong engineering-wise, and, you know, might not cost the homeowners as much as they think a bridge might cost. That's looking more in the future if the bridge did need to be replaced, um, might be able to do it more cost-effectively. Um, let's see, Glenn, I wanted to ask a couple questions. You, you had said that just yesterday, the, was it the protective covenant had been amended?
Yes.
And what, what is the wording, or what, what was, uh, actually changed in that?
Whereas Article Three, Paragraph Two D of the covenants, limited Lot Two to sixty-five-hundred square feet of a maximum allowable residential floor area. As of this date, the owner of Lot Two has a land use application pending for Picken County to increase the maximum floor area on Lot Two to seven thousand five hundred and twenty-six square feet, as permitted in the A R Two Zone in which Lot Two is located. Uh, and has requested the covenants be amended to remove the floor restriction with respect to Lot Two, and instead to allow the maximum floor area to be what is permitted in the A R Two Zone District. So that's what, what gets done, uh, in this, and that, uh, that language got approved.
Specific to Lot Two?
Yeah. Lot Two, yeah. And I have this document that we can submit to the record, um, as well as other documents that reflect what we presented today, with reports from, um, Colorado Wildlife Science, uh, S G M, and R E G, uh, the, uh, solar energy consultants.
Okay. And on the protective covenant, um, the one that is in our record was signed by Marie Aubienne Benedict Gordon and Art Daley, as the personal representative. So who, who actually does the approval? Is it?
Well, this.
Owners Association asks to approve it, or how does that work?
Well, the county's not a party to these covenants. So this was approved by the owner of Lot Four, uh, owner of Lot Six, which is, uh, the Gersons. They bought, uh, the Benedict House. Um, and then also, uh, uh, the owner of Lot One, um, Three, Four, and Six.
Okay.
Lot Five is now in, in the city, and is not a part of this.
So Lot, the owner of Lot One is?
Who's the owner of Lot Two?
The owner of Lot Two, yeah. The owner of Lot Two.
That's the applicant.
So were the, did the owners of Lot One vote on this also? They're shaking their head no, but.
Yeah, they're not a part of these covenants.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Then also, it says Lot Twelve Callahan on this protective covenant. What, what is Lot Twelve Callahan? It's not on any of the maps.
Yeah, that's, um, that was across the street from the Benedict's house, so, let's see. Here, it, this is, uh, this is where Fritz and Fobby's house was, right here. Here, this is, this is where Fritz and Fobby's house was, right here. And I think Callahan is this lot, right across the street from it.
When you drive in.
Yeah.
Benedict's was this way.
That's the Callahan subdivision.
Benedict's was this way, Callahan's was that way.
And it comes around down to in here, because this was really the yard in front of the Benedict's place.
Okay. I was just curious about that, that it, that popped up on the packet. And yet there was nothing on a map showing that. So I wanted to have that clarified. Let's see, that's all I've got for the moment.
Thank you. I want to follow up. I like Steve's suggestion on a condition that requires a live screening in perpetuity. I think would be beneficial there. I also want to circle back on something that George suggested, but I don't think we've closed the loop on here, which is some sort of requirement to look at the energy usage and monitoring that. So we want to craft some language about specifying a, I guess, use study after the fact to make sure that they are achieving the energy savings that the solar array is intended to. I like the idea of the bonding issue for impacts to the bridge and road. I also think it would be useful for us to specify, you know, some sort of timing of a study done before construction and then within three months or so after construction by a consultant agreed to by the HOA and the applicant. So we don't run into issues of, you know, if they agree on the consultant, then we should hopefully agree on the findings of those consultant reports before and after. And then have that bond apply to both bridge, any bridge maintenance and damage, or I should say wear and tear and damage, as well as road wear and tear and damage. I'd like to specify a condition to really articulate that the staging of vehicles should be beyond the gate. I think it just would be very clear to say that as opposed to Stillwater Lane starting at some point. You know, that there's not any confusion there.
Unless they stage, they stage off-site, off the property.
Sure.
Unless they stage somewhere else and radio in. So there's options.
Right. Let's see, I had one more point.
That's a good idea. So just kind of a, can I just comment, Greg? Just kind of a general statement to put in the reso, to be the details worked out in the construction management plan, just so we have it set in the reso that these are issues that need to be addressed in the construction management plan, right?
And then finally, I just want to acknowledge, you know, the, the Benedict's lost their competition in the early 90s and made concessions that were benefits to the public at that time. And, you know, these have sort of, I think, eroded over time. So I do just want to kind of acknowledge that I'm struggling with that a little bit. But I do think this is an appropriate place to land a TDR. And so, you know, I'm over the hump of approving the application with the conditions that we've requested.
Yeah, the only, the only one I would question is the, the vegetation, maintaining live trees in perpetuity. I mean, you could, you could say that to the HOA, they need to do it. You could say with any new construction bill, construction homes say. So you, I mean, you're sort of perhaps setting a policy saying, well, if I'm building and I've got some trees and there's some neighbors, then it's my responsibility as long in perpetuity to have to maintain those trees?
That's not my intention here. I think that there's a current condition that we would like to retain moving forward, sort of in anticipation of, you know, any unexpected damage that might occur to those. So I'm not, I'm not suggesting that as kind of a blanket policy. I am suggesting it as, you know, we've, if we're accepting that there's no visual conflict between the two lots, then I'd like to see some effort to retain that moving forward.
Could be worded differently?
Yeah. I understand what you're saying. There may be a way to get there. I, I just think it's, I don't know if it's quite fair to put the entire impetus on a homeowner. Trees have grown since they've been there, even before they've been there. They could have been infested by beetles five years ago and then we wouldn't have had that requirement. So I, I'm not sure how we would address that to help ensure. And maybe there's just some replacements if some trees go or maintain landscaping. I mean, we've done that with ELM a little bit to ensure that those trees are maintained and watered. But if you had a natural disaster or a fire, God forbid, I don't know. All of a sudden it's the, onto the owners of that landowner to have to mitigate that.
I think the reason the trees are of concern is because of the potential glare off the solar panels. And that they'd be looking right at the, the, you know, lot one homeowners. And so maintaining living trees there is important for, for main, you know, preventing that from happening.
The trees were required as far as the first approval to screening for scenic from the highway and from lot one. Now they're being used to also screen now for the solar. So I think we could put in something about the, the maintenance of a screening barrier between lot one and two. Because it may turn out that, you know, that they're finding the trees are blocking their view planes and the tree, you know, so maybe there's other options in the future that. John, do you have some language thoughts for me?
Not yet. I was just trying to drill down on the consensus of the board before you take a vote. Is the board looking for something in perpetuity or?
I think it's important.
A resolution as a condition is a, sounds a one-time event, you know. Re-vegetation occurs or tree planting occurs, but the continuing obligation, you know, out in time is not-
So could you say the maintenance of a scenic, a vegetative scenic barrier between lot one and lot two? Would that cover it? I mean?
You just need to prescribe some particularities so it's clear that, you know, when the obligation is being met or when the obligation is not being met.
I could offer a lot of times the language we use and maybe you can speak to the locality of the languages. Maybe lot two needs to maintain the vegetation screening to the maximum extent practicable. A lot of times we put that phrase in there and so it's, it accommodates those unforeseen disasters.
Well, if you're concerned about glare from the solar panels, I can understand that. But there's, I think there's, with the technology, and technology's constantly going to be changing, right? So if you go to perpetuity, I mean, who knows in 10, 15 years what that technology will be for you guys? And, and so it may not even be an issue now and probably most certainly won't be an issue down the road.
Well, they're going to use the non-glare, but the thing for me is not the solar. It's the thing is, that was with the previous approvals was, regardless of solar, was to have some kind of protective screening between lot one and two. It was a scenic issue based on what the Benedict's said many years ago. So I think, you know, to the best, what did you, what was the good word you used that I've already forgotten and it looks like you have too?
Maximum extent practicable and I'm fine.
Thank you.
On with that is it lacks a degree of specificity. I mean, what does that really mean?
It means four spruce, three apple. Can't have apples on them because there's bears.
It's loaded with specificity.
I don't know what you mean by specificity.
Maximum extent possible is, is a term that's left open to interpretation.
And I like it that way.
You don't know what you get with it though. And the property owner doesn't really know what the obligation is. And it's difficult for the neighbors to know when it's being fulfilled.
Do you have suggested language to fill that?
Is the, I guess, is the limitation, is the, is the vegetative condition limited to the, to mitigating the effects of the solar panels? Are you also talking about a visual, you know, barrier for the short skirts and such?
I think my intent is sort of like, let's honor the current condition under which we're evaluating this, to which we have a packet of, you know, pictures that are substantiating what that might look, what that looks like.
So we could say just, it's the owners who are required to maintain the current condition as regards to view planes, scenic view planes or scenic-
That would be fine. And then we would document the current condition with some sort of photographic perspective.
Yeah, which they've already submitted to the record.
And, and that's what the continuing obligation, the, for continuing obligations, you know, you have to have some, some type of guarantee to fulfill it. A financial guarantee typically won't do that because, you know, if this is going in through time, you'd have no idea what the future expense might be to remedy it 15 years from now or something like that. And also most financial securities need to have some life to them, you know, an end date. Unless it's a pile of cash, but I don't like to do that for obvious reasons. So the workaround that I've done with that before is, as the board has seen, is covenants. You have a covenant that obligates for a period of addition. We are the beneficiaries of the covenant and then we can enforce the covenant to require that the property owner remedy the vegetative situation if the screening goes away. And if they don't, then we have the ability to for, to require it through, you know, a judicial proceeding. So that's what we would have to bring back to some form of covenant.
But we could move this along today with that covenant coming back to us in future.
And I guess I just wonder, because what, what I'm sort of seeking is some assurances to the neighbors that, you know, this will be retained. So by putting it in the reso, you know, does that then give them, the neighbor, the HOA, you know, an opportunity to enforce that on their own based on their own interpretation of whether it's been retained as the current condition or not?
No, the resolution would, is a document or a requirement that's only enforceable by the county, the board.
So we would need a covenant to come back to us in future date that just clarifies what we were just talking about.
Well, we'll put it in the resolution, what you want. You want, you want a guarantee that's acceptable in form to the county attorney's office. And I'm just telling you what that form will be, that will accomplish and then will define the goal.
As depicted in the-
Maintaining vegetative screen as currently existing, as depicted in the application materials.
Glenn?
With respect to the trees, I think that it's in the mutual best interest of the owners of lot one and lot two to keep the vegetative screening. Although Michelle did say that she's lost some of her views because of the size of the trees. But I still think that it's in everyone's mutual best interest to have that screening. We don't have any problem with enacting the covenant. I know that our client, the applicant, wants to keep the vegetative screening. We don't know what will happen with a future owner. So the covenant seems like the appropriate way to go and we don't have any objection to that.
If I could, I wanted to add, I, I think that makes sense to me. I want to make sure that the trees aren't, don't grow so tall as we see 100-foot-high spruce trees in town that they completely negate the, the effect of the solar panels, you know. So I want to make sure that, yes, we want the screens, but it's got to be so high off the ground for fire. And it's also going to be so low. So that's another wrinkle in their solutions, I'm sure. You know, you don't have to plant a tree that's going to grow 100 feet high.
If those trees are already planted, you'd have to crop them.
Well, there, but it's something to consider. If we're going to plant trees, then the solar panels are pretty moot after how long, right? So that's one, something to consider. And I'm sure you've got suggestions and ideas. That was one, I just wanted to throw in my two cents worth on that. But I think the covenant could say, you know, we're trying to keep solar access and we're also trying to screen the neighbors from each other, which seemed like that was the original intent.
Well, the resolution should say that, Greg.
Okay.
Also to maintain the viability of the solar access.
Covenant is merely a guarantee how the-
Okay. So the resolution needs to say that. So somebody's going to have to help craft that. If I, if I could keep going on that topic or on the next one?
This is the same topic.
Okay.
The development agreement of 2002, signed by Commissioner Patty Clapper.
That's the chair.
She's the one who did it.
I was, I'm signing, Leslie Lamont's the one who did it, so we're going way back.
Says that the board and horn, this is the previous owner, agree that the landscaping along the mutual lot line between the property and lot one shall be installed in accordance of this landscaping plan. The board and horn shall each have the right to maintain said landscaping to ensure its viability. And the owner of the property may, if he chooses, install additional landscaping. So in this case, the county and horn each had the right, but it didn't say the obligation to maintain, maintain the trees is the way I read that. I don't know. This might put a little different wrinkle in it.
Well, that was a development agreement. I think we could solve it with a covenant that we're directing staff to draw.
What else? Well, he's looking at that, Greg. What else did you have?
The other thing, just regarding the solar panels, yeah, I know we can do glare-free solar panels. How glare-free they are is a good question that I still have. And I think it'd be easy enough for the applicant to model what this is going to look like with some reflections. It's, you can chart the course of the sun and, and give the homeowners, give the neighbors some assurance of that what these solar panels will look like with a rendering. And that's probably worth the cost of the investment so that they get a real clear idea of what, what they're going to be looking at in terms of worst possible glare, say in the middle of the summer or even winter, winter perhaps when the foliage is even less. You know, what does this mean for them? A visual reference to that is always helpful. One of the things that came up, a couple of things, snow removal is, is certainly going to be important. I'm assuming construction will continue through the winter for a period of time. I get the impression that the lot one unit owners aren't having, hauling a lot of snow off the property. They're stacking it and piling it 20 feet high. If the, if the road gets any more narrow, that could be a problem. And I just think that needs to be addressed by all parties before, you know, as we go forward. And I'm not sure quite where it gets put and if it affects the construction access. But boy, if the road gets three, four feet narrower because of a big snowbank, that, that could cause more problems. I was disturbed also to hear that the HVAC noise from the property is, is keeping people awake. If there's an HVAC audio concern, I think that I'd like to make sure that the applicant addresses that. Maybe they can exhaust it in a different direction or do something, insulate it better so that the neighbors aren't listening to their air conditioner. That's a quality of life issue, which I think the neighbors should be, not have to deal with. I was also a little concerned just about the survey, the bridge. Water's too deep to tell really what's going on with the bridge. So maybe we need to wait for the water to come down, you know, and really get a good idea of what's happening with this bridge before, you know. There ought to be somebody who can take a, go in and survey it, give us a, some confidence of what's happening. But bonding the bridge repairs makes some sense to me. And we talked about the trees. We've gone through the trees and I like where the trees are going. I don't want to create a whole slew of new rules if we don't need to. But to the mutual benefit of both sides and both have a right to repair. I'm thinking of a, a neighborhood, there's, it was called about a situation out with the raft building out by the north 40 where they, they put in the trees, they did their mitigation and the trees died. And it took five years for them to, we had to light a fire to get, you know, get it replaced. The neighbors called and said, hey, these dead trees have been here. Nobody ever does anything. What do we do? And it's being dealt with now. I think people just forget. So, you know, I think it's great that if both sides have the right to, to speak up or take care of something, it's good. This is on the applicant's property. But certainly they benefit and the neighbors benefit from the trees and replacement and care and making sure they don't grow too tall, however that works. We can get back to your language now. There was something else we need to. I couldn't craft that resolution right now. It changes myself. Looking for help.
Oh, I just also wanted to support the conversation that George brought up about limiting construction hours to Monday through Friday as a condition as well.
So what would you think about the hours? Right now it's seven to seven. If we just maintain Monday to Friday, seven to seven or?
That's what I'd do. Because it, it even hard-
At least it gives them some relief for the weekends?
I think that would- I think that would be a great benefit to the neighbors.
I mean, because, um, you know, you say eight to five, and, and let's, we're assuming that contractors are coming from down valley, and you can't get into town during a certain period of time, so contractors.
We're out of town.
I think we want to try to encourage them to get ahead of the traffic, come in earlier or leave a little later, not to further the congestion on eighty-two.
That sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, um.
Steve?
I think, um, that could maybe be part of the construction management plan to be negotiated, the, the actual working hours, but I know contractors start working at seven in the morning, that's, that's typical, and then they try to knock off maybe a little earlier in the afternoon on some, some days, but I think beating the traffic is part of the reason they wanna start early.
I think getting the job done is why they do seven to seven. They got the crews up here and they gotta do a lot of.
Well, I mean, we're the ones who are negotiating.
I think we should put it in the reso. I think that's a, I think that we're all supporting, and I think it should just go in the reso.
Then, on one other thought on the HVAC noise, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, I know at the Basalt Vista project, which is the net zero project in Basalt, affordable housing, they are, all the units there are using heat pumps for their heating and air conditioning, and I know they, they do make some noise, but I don't think it's probably as much noise as is probably being heard from the HVAC system right now, and so that might be a consideration for, um, finding, you know, whatever system is put in, it could be a much more energy-efficient heating and cooling system.
Yeah, for the energy use.
Than is, is existing now, and it might be much quieter, and I think it could be a win-win for the, the homeowner and for the neighbors.
Thank you. Thanks for collaborating on that. Okay, so, John, Eli. Um, the easiest way actually to deal with the HVAC is just require to have some of the, um, construction improvements on Lot Two between the HVAC units and Lot One. The building itself will block the sound, and the owners be to develop whatever, uh, system, you know, they want to.
It's my understanding, isn't the HVAC system the exterior right now where the new unit's gonna go?
Actually, there are three, uh, condensing units for air conditioning. Uh, two are located to the small garage, to the east side of the small garage, uh, on the east side of a stone wall. The third is at the north end of the building. I took decimal readings along Fabi Drive, and with that running in, uh, without it, there was no change in the decimal reading. It's the mechanical noise that you can differentiate between whistling leaves and the motor of the hum, so there's really actually no noise difference, it's just that.
It's just.
Mechanical sound. We can construct a fence around those, uh, condensing units, existing condensing units to block the noise. It's within, it's within the, uh, activity envelope, and we can introduce that.
Right, that's great, that's a great solution.
So HVAC, part of the reso HVAC system will have noise screening provided as part.
Um, and the other thing that was mentioned was just the gate. You know, if, if the gate to two and three is going, I don't know if this is even anywhere near part of the, it's part of the conversation, cause it accesses the property, but if the gate could be quieted down to, I, I could imagine living next to a squeaky wheel, right?
Uh, we'll talk to the HOA about that. It's an HOA improvement, so we can.
Right.
Well, I have a feeling it'll be left open, or I hope it's not gonna open and close for every car that you're asking to be parked back there now, cause you're increasing the noise, so maybe during construction hours that gate can be open ones and closed ones.
It's the hydraulic system is not.
Sure, and maybe it's, maybe it's time to do a little maintenance on it or replace it or put in a guy with a, you know.
We can ask if that'd be done, but we can't require it.
Oil gun. Mike will go operate the thing. Um, okay, so are we ready to make a?
Motion to?
Go, George.
Uh, I guess I need to close the public hearing.
We better just clarify, unless someone's been taking some very copious notes here.
Tammy has.
I have.
I used to do a little clarification.
Looks like a rabbit in the headlights.
A lot of comments.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing part of this, and we're just gonna get back to this, we're gonna.
He already closed it.
He already closed it.
All right, God, I think we're done. Nobody's here to.
He already closed it.
I did? Okay.
Yeah, it's okay, you can close it twice.
Close it twice, it's double.
Why don't you go through them one by one?
This is, this is at the point where in previous other land use considerations, I've said, well, I really think we should continue this and be able to look at all of the, the wording of the conditions that are put in, and then my fellow commissioners would all say, no, we can write, we can write the conditions right now, the staff.
So Steve, we can.
Tammy took all the notes, the, of the things that we talked about, and then, um.
That's right.
That's right, so let's, let me tell us.
So the, following the precedent.
I'm gonna go to Greg to sign, so Greg, make sure they get it right.
There we go, right?
Okay, so, and, and one thing we didn't touch on was kind of the energy reduction, and what you guys wanted to see in terms of, did we nail that down to a number?
I didn't.
Well, I didn't have that in resolution, but I had just suggested that, um, they've.
Consult with Core.
Consult with Core and look at some other options, whether it be a heat pump, geothermal, um, non-glare panels, um.
Grant opportunities and that they monitor.
And it has to have a monitoring system as well, but that, that will be in the res of the monitoring system, yeah.
Okay, um, and so in terms of that monitoring system, do you guys wanna see the applicant come back to the board or to, you know, in a year, or should that data be available if we wanted to inquire?
Well, if, if, um.
Where do you wanna go with that?
If the applicant is mitigating, uh, their energy use on-site versus paying rent, then they have to show the county that they're actually accomplishing that.
Okay.
Looking at Cindy, it goes back to your department, right? Doesn't come to us.
Yeah.
So do you, you want them to show that in a year, provide a report?
On an annual basis.
Annual basis.
Well, Cindy, what?
Mike?
Yeah, we haven't really put. We're working on code requirements that would look into monitoring systems to ensure that once solar systems are put in, that they're not just turned off or, um, or go away. We don't have any specific code language yet on that, so I wouldn't really know what to require, but I think it would be safe to say that, um, that these monitoring and measuring, um, systems comply with future Picking County Land Use Code, so that.
They did the energy use.
Uh, the obligation has to be certain as of the date of the obligation, which is the resolution, so we can't say comply with something in the future.
Okay.
So we, we need to come up with something that they're going to comply with, and if we do amend the code in the future, it'll be a, um, a code section of general applicability, and the entire county will have to apply to, comply with it.
The only building permits that are gonna be coming through after that time.
Right, but everybody.
So can we say we would like the applicant to supply documentation of energy use on an annual basis to community development to show that their on-site renewable energies are functioning, and they have a reduction of their use of natural resources or whatever else?
Well, they're off, what they're saying is they're offsetting their, the new, the new addition. I mean, that's really, I mean, anything above that is great, but they need to show that they're offsetting their energy, because otherwise they'd have to pay rent fee, right? No, they wouldn't have to.
They don't have to do it for exterior use.
Ah, okay.
So they're being great to do this at this point, so I think we do need to have something in there that says that the on-site renewable energies, well, some kind of documentation has to show that they're working, cause we're, one of the reasons we're moving this approval forward, if we choose to move it forward, is because they have offered to do this, um, mitigation of the energy use for this addition, and we need to know that that's being done. So John knows the language.
No, the, the question I have is, is the, is the issue a, uh, reduction, reduction in energy, energy consumption, or simply that the, uh, the, the, the equipment or methodology that's employed is functioning?
Well, they're, they're saying that they're going to offset their energy use on the addition, right? That's what they're saying.
And their energy study has shown what that will be.
So that's, that's sort of the baseline.
So that would be not showing an increase from today with the addition?
Well, this is a new addition.
And we don't know.
Correct, so today the, the addition isn't on, and so if the addition is net zero, then you'd expect that you would not see.
The same energy use.
And I, I, I would just caution the board from an administrative perspective that, you know, doing this year, year to year may be difficult to track.
That's what we're gonna do in the future.
But it may be, it may be, you know, doing a, a one-year, two-year run, maybe.
In the future, we're gonna do it year to year to year, that's kinda.
Well, they can install, they can install the monitor system. I mean, we have one at the library that shows the actual usage on an annual basis.
Especially if you work with Core. And Holy Cross, they'll help you do that. They want that information. And isn't it our plan to do it year to year to year to year?
We haven't worked out all those details yet.
We're trying to figure out.
Well, this is a pilot, this would be a great pilot.
That's right.
But what I heard, quite frankly, I mean, back to John's question, I think what I heard, um, was that the entire house was gonna be renovated, and there'd be an energy savings based on that renovation of 20% more than what the house has today, based on REG's analysis.
It has potential.
Potential was a, were your, potential depends on what they're actually able to do once they get into the renovation.
Well, but I think, I like John's wording, be, uh, what we're saying is that, uh, with this addition, there won't be any additional increase in energy use, consumption.
So they have to give us a baseline.
From, from the state.
But it won't be more.
And I, I, just trying to figure out what, what the board's intent is.
Right.
The board's intent is that they're gonna offset the energy use in this new addition, this new, how many, seventeen hundred fifteen?
Hundred square feet.
Seven hundred square feet. So that the energy use, the baseline will be, they'll have to show us what their energy use for the house is currently, which they have that from this study, and that in a year after the CO and they've moved in and the house is operating, that that energy use does not cha, does not go, can go down, we would love that, but it does not go up.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where we wanna go, right? Are you gentlemen listening to the great statement I just made?
Yes, yes, and we're, we're already having a sidebar about it. The problem I see is that going forward beyond the first year and the second year and several years down the road, that's when things get muddy and get lost, and things change, and maybe efficiencies lost, or trees grow taller, or, you know, whatever happens, and, and it's gonna be pretty hard to, you know, so it almost comes, there's a, there's a good faith aspect to this, is that they're trying to do the right thing, and, and, you know, we can't count on that all the time if we're making this, you know, this, this approval based on.
So Greg, could I ask you, if they were saying they were gonna make it net zero, would you not want it to remain net zero?
You certainly would, but, you know, what we're learning is how hard it is to measure that and how hard it is to measure it on an ongoing basis, and so it would be pretty, how can you do it without being so onerous on the, and maybe that's part of it, maybe everyone's gonna have to report how much energy they use.
That's, that's where I was gonna go. I was gonna say, if the owner is willing to allow us to, um, randomly check their energy usage to ensure that it's not beyond what today's energy usage is.
You have to define randomly, I don't think the council, legal council.
I know the Basalt Vista Enrel down in Golden is actually monitoring their, their net zero system, so they can learn more and, and optimize, and, you know, it's, it's almost like becoming part of the, the experiment of what a smart home is about, and that's the way it's moving for this sort of thing, and I would encourage you to go for that, but, you know, I, I wanna make sure we do something that's pretty practical.
Core has a statement that they use, and I can't recite it, but when Core spends money on someone's home, they then get the right to be able to check that home for its energy usage, um, as part of the agreement, so, um, maybe there's something in that language that we could use.
Can we reflect Core's language in the resolution stating the monitoring of energy use in the future?
John's.
I'm not sure what the Core language is. To tell you the truth, I thought it was only a singular, uh, check as opposed to a continual.
Well, that's regardless, we could just say on an annual basis, I mean.
Well, yeah.
Just, just what we've stated, I mean, you guys had the sidebars, that worked.
Once you get it established, it's not that hard to do.
So I think, I think we got the language. You wanna just kick it back to Tammy?
That the, um, that the, the condition of the approval allowing for additional square footage shall not cause any additional energy consumption.
And?
Should we report it on a lot?
On an annual basis.
On an annual basis.
Reportable on an annual basis.
And, and the consumption.
Community development.
And, and the county shall have the ability to monitor the energy consumption.
That's where we're going, Cindy.
Perfect, everyone okay with that?
This is a trial.
Uh, I would be okay with that. I don't, I can't imagine how it's gonna go, but I'm.
Gotta start somewhere.
Gotta start somewhere.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah, no, it's great. Okay, next.
So we have energy use, parking. Bye, Jonathan.
So there was a lot about the construction management.
There's no cause and effect there.
That a construction manage, a detailed construction management plan be submitted at building permit. Within that, I don't know if you guys wanna fully commit to conditioning, well, right, you are gonna condition the Monday through Friday, seven to seven hours.
That's gonna be in the reso.
That's in the reso.
It'll be part of the management plan.
Um, staging, all staging, um, has to occur after the gate, past the gate.
Which would be south?
Or offsite.
Offsite meaning off.
Off.
The Stillwater subdivision property, not off the Lot Two, but off.
Okay.
Other side, north forty.
Okay.
Buttermilk parking lot.
Yeah, right, but, buttermilk.
I was just kidding.
Okay, um, well, if you wanna reduce these at North Star, they could all stage at North Star.
So they'll be able to get in the water, out of the water.
Two birds with one stone.
Okay, and then we had, um, the fencing for the HVAC systems, we'll condition that in, um.
Sound mitigation fencing, right?
Yeah, I would, I would, uh, it's not fencing per se, but that the sound will be.
Sound dampening.
Sound mitigation around HVAC, existing HVAC equipment.
That's sound mitig.
How is, how do we know, what's the degree of mitigation that's required?
Well, well, currently, for the sound metering, there is no impact, it's just the difference between rustling leaves and mechanical.
The noise that's generated by the HVAC system does not exceed county noise standards, and it will blend in with the background natural noise as measured, but.
That sounds good, I like it, that's.
As we've heard, you can distinguish between a, a whirring motor and a, and rustling leaves, and one is quite annoying and the other is not, so I mean, do you want to have a condition that says you're not going to hear this HVAC system on Lot One, or is it something else?
Well, that's pretty extreme, it's like saying you're not gonna hear snow making or people skiing on snowboards down the ass of a mountain.
Exactly.
Kids playing in the street.
At the, um, the hospital addition, they put in a sound barrier system, so their chiller units next to Meadowwood were, I mean, they.
I know.
Put in these big sound barrier things that I think pretty well.
I think we should just say.
Kept the noise from going into Meadowwood, but.
Screening around the HVAC system will be installed in order to.
Reduce.
Reduce.
Or minimize, reduce or minimize.
Best available.
And we can measure where if something's built.
Well, unless there is a measuring requirement, I mean, you could put up a fence, and that would be it, it will dampen the noise, it just might not be sufficient.
I think that's all we're asking for.
We wanna supplement what's there.
And that, there, just, and just, yeah.
Doesn't seem like a problem, right?
Find a different alternative, like a heat pump.
One thing that concerns me is if the fence needs to be a certain height, and it could be approaching into a setback, and you're gonna get a variance to the fence.
Glenn, it's not gonna happen, it's gonna be fine.
It could happen, but, um, you know, I, maybe the thing is, if the sound mitigation can be achieved through some other means in the fence, then, and, we shouldn't close that option.
Fencing will be installed unless another appropriate sound mitigation is found to be appropriate.
Rapid, it's sound dampening, let's just go focus on what we're trying to accomplish as a quieter system, however they get to that.
Okay. Yeah, we can.
It could be.
We were talking about the city. We were talking about the city.
We could compare it to what the existing system is now. How much noise does it put out and just say that the amount would be that amount or less than that amount. It couldn't be greater than the amount that the.
The problem is, is the complaint is about the existing noise.
It's the quality.
Existing.
I don't know that we're able to distinguish that from the background noise and so that, I think, is, is the challenge and what's measurable is something that's done.
And I don't think we can address everyone's complaints. This is one complaint and I don't think it's our job to have to address every single complaint.
If just simple screening of the HVAC system is appropriate and.
For sound dampening.
This is a subdivision. It's in the urban growth boundary.
We're almost there.
Okay.
I think that your solution you recommended, to put it on the other side of the house, make probably dozen or.
But then that, not as easy as just moving it to the other side of the house.
Yeah, okay.
I think the biggest concern for me is that we address the parking, the staging and no parking and use of Fabby loop. Fabby loop is definitely in there and that should be in the resolution.
Well, Tammy hasn't finished her list yet, so.
Yeah, but I just, I'm just saying that I'm adding to make sure we don't get lost in.
Yep, I got that one.
You want to keep, keep reading to us?
Yeah, so there was the conversation about the glare of the solar panel. So there is actual language in the resolution right now that says non-reflective. I don't know if you guys want to get more specific than that.
I think that covers it. I think their plan is to use non-glare. That's what everybody's using these days.
It's the requirement.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then the discussion about vegetation, there was.
Short skirts.
The comment about maybe putting some kind of orbs or other vegetation in that gap between.
If, I think it'd be if possible, because I know fire mitigation is extremely important, but we're putting, we have that, bear that screening there for a reason and so, you know, it becomes the conflict of, you know, you want vegetation and you want habitat for birds, but you need to cut the trees down because of fire issues. So if, if possible to re-veg underneath, when ladder fuels are removed, to re-veg with fire resistant vegetation to promote screening.
Perfect.
If, if that's possible.
Cindy, is that okay?
Okay.
Well, you, you have that actually under 11A, you have that under defensible space.
Does it say put in more vegetation for?
I mean, it's not specific to that screening.
Okay, so screening would be sort of an, an addition to 11A.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, George.
I don't know if you want to.
Bonding for the bridge, is that?
But, yeah, we've got that one as well as the height reduction for the trees, making sure they don't grow too tall. I didn't know if you guys wanted to condition something.
Well, you know, by the time they grow to Greg's 100 feet, we'll probably have totally new construction, new, new technology for solar, so.
Patty will still be on the board, though.
I'm going to be, just to be sure that trees grow.
Right, we have the financial security for the bridge, so we could, let me see where that, no, it is.
Bridge and, and road.
The bridge and the road.
What?
That'll come back to us with the covenant after.
No, I can be done with the bond or financial security of some type.
Have we done what?
Damage to the road or the bridge.
No, no, I'm saying it's not, we're not writing that today. It'll come.
It will not come back to you.
Will come back to you, it'll just.
You're requiring financial security to cover any damage to the roadway or the bridge or I would, I would broaden it up to any other property owned by the HOA and that'll, that'll be that. It won't come back to you, it'll just be done.
Okay.
So as part of this, we're going to have an evaluation of the current status of the bridge and roads that will go into, a baseline that goes into the construction management plan.
Yes.
Okay.
Does that cover it?
Yeah.
I just want to point out that that bridge has survived, uses a gravel pit, building many, many homes. It seems to be.
I used to drive over that bridge a lot because I swim with the gravel pit.
So we're pretty confident it's going to survive again.
Yeah.
Good to know.
We are too now.
I am sorry.
And are we requiring that there is a post survey to, so we know if there's damage?
We could do the door and after.
Yeah.
I guess the question.
That's whether they're getting their money back or not getting their money back.
Question is how much or how do we quantify the financial security?
John will do that.
Okay. We're going to share the construction management plan with the county and the employee housing HOA will condition that in prior to issuance of building permit. Do you have anything else, Greg?
Let me look.
And we're going to spell the Benedict's names correctly.
That's right, that's important.
Do you have anything in your notes?
I think I checked off, did you?
I'm sorry, Tammy, did you get the vegetation?
Yeah. The short skirt vegetation.
And what do you want in there, little guy? Unicorn that hands out ice cream?
Mike?
Yeah, Mike.
I looked over my notes, I don't see anything else in there.
Good one, Steve.
Okay.
Tammy's good.
Are you ready, sir?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I'm ready. I think it's time for a.
I will make a motion to approve. Oh geez, there's so many things to read on this one. Hang on. What am I approving here?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution granting approval to AWL West LLC for major amendment to a development permit, GMQS exemption for additional floor area using a TDR, subdivision exemption for minor plot amendment and activity envelope and site plan review with the additional amendments to the resolution as discussed.
Is that it?
Would accept that.
Great, I'm going to second that great motion, George, now that I've got it in front of me.
Got a second, another discussion, seeing none, I'm going to call it, call in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Way to hang in there.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for that.
On the next item, do I need to leave the room just for it to be continued?
Okay.
I need to sit back from the table?
Just don't vote.
Just don't vote on it, huh? So this is, next up on is the Aspen Mountain ski area amended and restated ski rec master plan, rezoning activity envelope and site plan. And it includes a resolution, we do this together or separately, resolution of board commissioners approving the amended and restated Aspen Mountain ski rec, ski rec master plan, activity envelope and site plan, and it's a notice of continuation to a special meeting on August 21.
So moved?
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the second is ordinance conditionally rezoning certain real property on Richmond Ridge owned by the United States and the Aspen Skiing Company from Ag Residential 10 from Ag Residential 10 acre and rural remote zone districts to ski rec zone district and amending the zoning map to reflect this change. Second reading will continue to special meeting on August 21.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye. And for the record, please note that I abstained from both of those.
Patty Clapper didn't abstain.
Gnett can stay in the minute.
Yep. So we have open discussion, anything for open discussion presently?
I hope so, I sat through all this.
Yep. You're still here.
I thought you were ditching out on land use these days.
Cindy looks like she's a concern.
Question or something?
Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to confer with John, but I thought that we were moving Aspen Mountain to the 28th.
The 21st and the 28th, both. 21st is the next meeting and that's why it was continued to that date.